Good evening and welcome to the regular council meeting for the City of Pasco for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. One second, my apologies. There we go. Agendas are available in the back of the room and a detailed agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website. The council meeting is televised live on Spectrum Cable, channel one ninety-one in Pasco and Richland, and it's streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. Ask you please silence all mobile phones or other electronic devices during the meeting. Council asks that anyone in the audience who wishes to speak during the visitor section or during a scheduled item of the agenda to sign in prior to the meeting. This sheet will be used to call a speaker forward. If you did not sign your name to the sheet prior to the meeting, you may still have an opportunity to speak by raising your hand at the appropriate time. Remember to state your name and address into the microphone for the record. And with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Brajas is excused. There are six members present. We have a court.
Excellent. I ask you all to please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thank you for that. And with that, we'll move on to item four, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. The items on our agenda tonight are item A, the approval of meeting minutes from September sixteenth and September twelfth; item B, bills and communications approving claims in a total of four million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents, and approving bad debt write-off in the total amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and two cents. Item C, resolution number four-two-four-five, the two thousand and twenty-three community development block grant annual work plan and allocations. Item D, resolution number four-two-four-six, the two thousand and twenty-three home annual work plan and allocations. Item E, ordinance number, which is item number, or which is ordinance number four-six-zero-seven, and resolution number four-two-four-seven, a budget amendment and bid award for a citywide traffic signal phase-two project. Item F, is the resolution number four-two-four-eight, funding application to ecology for wastewater treatment plant improvements phase-two. Item G, which is resolution number four-two-four-nine, process water reuse facility interim agreement with Dairy Gold. And finally, item H, resolution number four-two-five-zero, Zone Three Water Storage Reservoir Project Change Order Number Three. That's our consent agenda. Is there any item that the council would like to remove? The items that the public would like to remove from our consent agenda? Alright, then I request a motion.
Like to move the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Alright, so it's been moved by councilmember Campos and seconded by councilmember Serrano. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
And Maloney.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Without move on to item five, proclamations and acknowledgements, none listed. Which brings us to item six, visitors. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. And some questions are best directed to staff members who have the access to specific information. Citizen comments will be limited to three minutes each by myself. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. With that, is there any item that's not further on the agenda that's a member of the public would like to speak on? Alright, seeing none. Oh. Sorry, ma'am. Nope, red light on. There we go.
There it is. Okay. Suzanne Diallo with Chow Trotteria, one-twelve North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. And I just wanted to make public comment about our event, Arias in the Alley, that we had the week prior. And I just want to give a thank you to Director Worley for helping out with sanitizing the alley. Thank you to Dave Zabel for pushing things along and getting us a solution and also Darcy Buckley for getting a payment to me quickly for the lights. And to the council for supporting the event. I think this type of event is a one-of-a-kind event. Never happened before in the Tri-Cities, much less Pasco. But it is, I'd like to bring it to everybody's attention that this was a private event. This was an event that was put on by a small business, but with the right support from city government, we can do these types of things that will help develop the downtown Pasco and help attract people to come here to do business with us. And I can tell you that from the statistics, from the tickets sold, the number-one city the tickets were sold out of was Kenillic, number-two was Seattle, and number-three was Pasco. So, very interesting statistics, but I look forward to doing further events like this and hopefully get the support of the city going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on an item that is not further along in the agenda? Sir, I think I saw you raise your hand first.
It's my first time here, so please apologize. I'm Steve Wilson. I go by Wilson. I live on Queensberry Drive over in Broadmoor. My first time speaking, I was born in Pasco. I left for a while, raised a family. Basically, I'd just like to introduce myself. I have some time available and I would like to invest it locally within the community now that my kids are grown and that sort of thing. Taking a look at what's happening in Pasco, I'm very excited. First, I want to thank you all for your effort, your dedication, and your energy. It shows that you really are passionate about what you do, and I appreciate that. Councilmember Serrano, you're in my district. Thank you for everything you do and the passion and logic that you use to pursue your position. I appreciate that. But here's what I'd like to talk to you about. Councilmember Campos, you represent my old neighborhood. I used to live right across the street from the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. Excuse me. Let me catch my breath. So, before that fence came up, I would get night crawlers. I remember explaining to my friends that it wasn't a sewer treatment. It was actually the water treatment. Used to ride my ten-speed all over town. I used to go to Claire's Beauty College. Ms. Dever would do the haircut checks. That was right across the street from Bonanza eighty-eight cents store and right around the corner from that True Value store that never seemed to close down. They're always liquidating. And it's changed quite a bit. And what I can tell you is I really love what's happened to downtown Pasco. It's amazing how vibrant it is, whatever focus has been put to use, whatever energies have been channeled to try and create such a positive environment. It just really makes me happy to see that. So, for those who aren't familiar, I took a look at the downtown master plan. It looks like a buckyball to me. It has these twelve oh tangents that we need to focus on in order to make this long-term planning happen. One thing I'd like to, one thing I did is just to test that particular model. I thought, well, what's a pressing issue that we need to hurry up and get taken care of? I'm going to grab a couple legs of this model and see how that works. Couple of those legs were the art and also the other, one of the other legs here. Pardon me here. So with this model, so there's a better explanation. I'll tell you what. Look at the city council workshop, anyone watching the video on September twelfth. It was explained by Rick White. The model represents a buckyball. It has different tangents. What I did is I applied the downtown marijuana situation with that particular model. What I came up with as a citizen and a long time, you know, someone with a perspective, long time in Pasco, is that it's a square peg for a round hole at this time. Now, what I like is some of the discussions from councilmember Serrano about maybe in the sixty-eight Road one hundred area.
If you could go ahead and wrap up your.
Thank you. But so that is my opinion as far as how that all plugs in. And vote Rick Miller for county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, ma'am, you raise your hand, please. Go ahead and come up to the podium and state your name and address, your name for the record, please.
My name's Pam Behren, and I'm actually here with my grandson. His name's Kason. I call him Bug. And he has some things that he wanted to say to the city council that he's been thinking about for a really long time. We did talk to Dave Zabel, but Bug wanted to speak his own mind, if that's okay. He knows he's got a short amount of time.
Hello. I would like to talk about the lack of handicap swings in the Tri-City area and that it's not fair to children with disabilities. And if, I know like they do have those kinds of swings, but I think that there should be more to that than just having that. I mean, the bike trips, and it makes it hard. You can't get your wheelchairs into those places. You just can't. So, so I would like to make it better so that you can, so that it can be fair for all. I want a park that makes it to where both disability and both not can still have fun in a same park. And, and I just want that. That's what I want. So, so I thank you very much. Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you very much for speaking up, and I'm one hundred percent sure that our staff is taking note of that. And we'll be able to address that and take a look at that.
I really do hope so because he never swung until a few months ago, and it was in Spokane. And so we came here and we're thinking, oh, this is our town. They'll have a swing here for us, and we could not find one anywhere. Even at the so-called ADA parks, there weren't anything or anything we could get to. So, that's what triggered this. This is all his idea. I'm just the pusher. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you for listening to us.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming and talking to us.
We have, yes, if this will help you guys, it's the visual of the things that he's done and everything. I don't know if you would like.
Yeah, if you could turn to the clerk, she'll distribute it to the rest of us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, nothing on the rest of our agenda is going to top that, so I will challenge staff to rise to the challenge. Thank you. Any other member of public? Mr. Vargas, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the city council, my name is Felix Vargas. I live at nine hundred North Road sixty-four in Pasco. I agree, that is a very tough act to follow. That young man has my vote in all respects. I want to just say something very briefly about the presentation at the workshop last week on the master plan for downtown Pasco. It is noble that we're doing this, although it is perhaps the third or so iteration of such a plan that I've seen in the last ten years. The others are collecting dust in a suitable bookshelf, and I hope this one does not. That said, it is alright. It is perfectly alright to talk about beautifying the city, making it more of a destination place for families and visitors. But it's only half a loaf. What we need is the other half. And the other half deals with the serious deterioration of the infrastructure of the buildings in downtown Pasco. Until we remedy the decay, the state of disrepair of a lot of the columns and postings in the underground of these buildings, we're not going to have our objectives met, in my view. And so we need an updated engineering plan, which looks at what it takes to repair the inner cities, the inner parts of the buildings in downtown Pasco, as well as having something that beautifies the outside, creates more space, and so forth and so on. So I would just urge you to request that we do an engineering update of a plan to look at the serious disrepair. There'll be another discussion about whose responsibility it is to repair that. And certainly, I don't think that the city or the taxpayer ought to bear the full burden. There has to be some responsibility, some accountability on behalf of the owners of these buildings. But, so let's get the other half of the loaf done, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Sir.
Good evening, council. Jared Martinez with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority. Just hearing some of the comments today, I'm again honored to be the executive director of this position. And two weeks ago, we celebrated bringing back the Fiery Foods Festival after two years of not hosting it because of COVID. And we have a lot to learn from and a lot to improve upon for future years, but I'd like to just thank the city for the support in making it a very successful event. And to just name a few people, we have a special thank you to Dave Zabel, Zach Ratkai, Brent Kebalik, Troy Hendren, Josie Perez, Dan Dotto, Tom Holmes, Ken Rosky, and Mike Gonzalez for helping us make it a successful event, and it was really great to have some of the support from council and city staff there. So, thanks for helping us make a successful Fiery Foods Festival, and we're looking forward to keeping this momentum forward for Cinco de Mayo and next year's Fiery Foods Festival. So, I have an official little thank you card here that I'll hand over to the city clerk. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Right. Any other member of the public want to speak on an item not further on the agenda? Sir?
Thomas Grambo, Big Maple Properties, one zero eight North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. I just want to give a shout out to that young man who was just here. That was pretty impressive. I know how challenging it can be to be up here and talk, and man, he hit that one out of the park. Want to touch on a few things. I agree with what Mr. Vargas said. I think that it's, we talked about life safety issues in the downtown with our buildings and challenges that come along with those, getting those old buildings upgraded and the infrastructure upgraded. I've talked in brief about using potentially CDBG funds, because CDBG funds do allow for investment on private property, like with the facade grant, and I understand that there are some challenges surrounding that. But I hope that city staff can take a look at how those funds could possibly be directed towards that in the future. I apologize I wasn't able to make it here. You know, my wife and I are here every single week. We were late last week because our neighbors, our alley neighbor's building caught on fire. So we, I got a frantic call at around seven o'clock from my renter saying that our neighbor was on fire. So we rushed over there, made sure that everything was okay and not going to impact us. And during that time, we did miss the master plan presentation. And it was great to, we went back and rewatched it, and it was great to see. Unfortunately, it was cut a little bit short. I understand it was a packed night with a lot of presentations, but it was great to see those items being presented and hopefully executed. I know councilmember Maloney, you mentioned there were thirty-two, I believe, short-term action items. Whatever support you need from the community, from the DPDA, from business owners, please let us know so that we can get those executed. There are a lot of things that can be done quickly, and let's get some small wins. Suzanne mentioned earlier the Arias in the Alley event. That's a, that's a display of how things can be executed quickly with city partnership, with, and private industry trying to bring something new to the downtown. I also wanted to mention during that Arias in the Alley event, sorry, I know three minutes comes quick.
You have about a minute left.
You mentioned last week that there was a literal dumpster fire. So, I don't know who was aware of what happened there, but there, one of the dumpsters in the alley caught on fire during our event. So I want to give a shout out to code enforcement and fire marshal for having the inspection programs in place. I know for a bunch of my rental properties, I'm due for inspection, and those exist for a reason. I know a lot of people grumble, why do we need this? But I am confident that when that fire happened, I happen to have fully charged fire extinguishers on my property. And I'm confident that if I wasn't required to do that or didn't have an inspection the year prior, it wouldn't have happened. It wouldn't have been sitting there. So, there is a reason that those exist, and as property owners, we should welcome those because they're not, they're trying to catch us through things. They're trying, they're there for a reason to try and make businesses safer, property safer, and living spaces safer for the residents of the downtown, so.
Excellent. You were right, your three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, one last call. Anyone from the public want to speak on an item that's not further on in the agenda? Alright, seeing none, we will move forward to the next item. And thank you all for the comments. We really do consider and listen to each of the comments that are said, and I know staff is taking notes as well. Especially about swings in the parks. I think we'll all make, we'll all be following up on that one. Alright, moving on to item seven, reports from committees and officers. Any of our council have any items from the last week that they'd like to report on?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, last Thursday, I did attend the reception at the Pasco Aviation Museum for Kayla Barone. And it was really good. Got to ask her some questions about being an astronaut and basically, she's from Richland, but it's always good to have a celebrity here in the Tri-Cities, so it was a good time. And I got to check out the museum, and again, it's, I always love seeing the museum and all the different artifacts that we represent in our contribution to World War Two, and it was really good. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I have one item to report on. I think we'd all been invited up to Spokane by Spokane City Councilmember Karen Stratton to discuss their experiences retail cannabis. I was able to attend, so my wife and I made the trip on Friday to spend some time up there. It was a really good conversation. I tried to ask a lot of the questions that we've been hearing, we've been asking, we've been hearing from the public asking, just so we can get a little more information on what has Spokane's experience with this matter been. So, I've typed up a set of notes. Our economic development manager, Mike Gonzalez, was there as well. So I sent it his way not to edit, but rather to, if he has any other additional items he wants to send for him to be able to put together a fuller packet for the rest of the city council. So that's in staff's hands if interested in hearing or seeing what I've heard from the City of Spokane.
Just to jump in on that thread, have we reached out across the river to speak with Benton County or City of West Richland about their experiences and have a similar listening session with our true neighbors?
We've not had any formal conversations, although the two other city managers are aware that the city is doing listening sessions.
Okay. If they have any insight that might be valuable, you know, whether they attend the listening sessions or, I don't know. I'm not really interested in another presentation. I don't know how to capture that, but if there's a way to bring, I mean, data from right here in the Tri-Cities or experience, that'd be, I think, very compelling. So, I'll just offer that.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Alright, with no further reports in front of us, we'll move on to item eight, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. First item there, we have a public hearing for the Northwest Area Sewer LID number one fifty-one, final assessment roll. Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Maloney, and councilmembers. Tonight, we're going to have a public hearing, and one of the things that you'll notice about this particular one, it's going to be a little bit different than ones that you may have been involved with before. Some of the council members have done this before related to other LIDs. This is typical for when we complete an LID and we go to determine what the final assessment will be. There's a very formal process that staff has gone through already, and a formal process we will go through tonight. It's a quasi-judicial situation, and so it's going to be more formal than what you have probably seen before. And so, right now, I'm gonna, we got a couple of people that are representing the city in a different manner. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steve DiGiulio, an attorney representing the city.
Deputy Mayor Maloney, members of the council, good evening. Nice to be back before the city council. Just to be clear, I am Steve DiGiulio, and I am representing the LID as special counsel. Eric Ferguson, your city attorney, is the attorney for the city council, and I'm screened from any communications outside this hearing with the city council and will not be advising the council regarding the final assessment roll. The purpose of this meeting is to hear any protests to the final assessments for LID one fifty-one, the Northwest Pasco Sewer LID. This council will make the final determination of the assessment roll and will confirm its decision later by ordinance. The only issues before the council are whether, one, the Northwest Sewer Area Project will generate special benefit to the properties within the LID, and if so, whether the amount of special benefits to each property exceeds the amount of the assessment. And second, whether the assessments are proportionate. As in the case of other LIDs in the past, the city clerk will read the list of those property owners who have filed a written protest with the city prior to the start of the hearing. Only those property owners who have filed a written protest will be allowed to participate. That's a statutory requirement. If someone in the audience has not filed a written protest, you must file a written protest in order to participate, and time will be permitted if you want to write something up and give it to the city clerk so that you'll have an opportunity to be heard. All persons who wish to give testimony in this hearing will be asked to take an oath to be administered by the city attorney. Then, city staff will present testimony in support of the final assessment roll. Any property owner wishing to cross-examine staff must wait until his or her protest is considered. After the staff has presented its testimony, protests will be heard in the order received. When the name of the protest is called, they'll be asked to come forward and present any testimony or evidence that they may wish to present. That is the time that they'll be provided with opportunity to ask staff questions. After property owners presented all testimony and exhibits, the city staff may have questions for the witnesses, and then that will repeat with any other protest. The council will consider all evidence presented when it considers these protests. After all the property owners who wish to be heard have been heard, staff may elect to present rebuttal testimony. And of course, questions may be asked of any of the city witnesses at subsequent times as well. After the city has presented any rebuttal evidence, no testimony or exhibits will be accepted, and the hearing will be closed unless the council determines to continue the hearing further. At such point, there'll be opportunity for final argument, and the council will later deliberate and announce any ruling. My understanding is that this is scheduled for the next regular city council meeting. As indicated previously, the city council's final decision will be by ordinance to be taken up at another meeting. We ask that any exhibits be presented to the clerk for numbering, and that way we can refer to those exhibits as necessary. As a reminder, this city council sits as what's known as a Board of Equalism. As a reminder, this city council sits as uh, what's known as a Board of Equalization. Um, the council, as Mr. Worley indicated, is sitting in a quasi judicial capacity. You may not discuss with anyone involved with the LID these matters unless during this uh, public hearing. Uh, the property owner should not be contacting you and you should not, if questions are raised, they should be directed. To staff or the city clerk. Um, at this time, I will ask the clerk to read uh, the first list of uh, any owners who have filed written protests with the city clerk.
Uh, we have not received any at this time.
Thank you. Uh, again, though, at um. Soon as the city uh, staff presentation is presented, we'll again call for any further written protests. Um, at this time, then I'll ask uh, Mr. Worley. Um, Ryan Withers from RH two and Maria Sarah, the city CIP manager to stand. And raise your right hand so the city attorney can administer an oath.
Raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
This time, I'll uh, introduce Ms. Sarah and Mr. Withers for uh, the bulk of the city's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. We are here to present um, the process in which we arrived to the final assessments and. Uh, recap on this project. To get started, uh, we wanted to uh, show you what the, the. Set of actions were at the beginning of this process in twenty twenty, actually starting in twenty nineteen. Um, there was work towards the formation of the LID resulting in the forming of the LID in. March of twenty twenty and the work prior to the forming of the LID included a resolution. Um, declaring the intent to form the LID, notifications to property owners and workshops. For coordination with those property owners to assess their interests and their needs for sewer. After the formation of the LID, as you're seeing in, in the slide, uh, there were publications, more notices. A time for protest and um. At the end of that time, the period for protest, a certification of uh, protest, which was in that case zero. And in this next slide, we are just giving you a snapshot of what the formation of the LID ordinance read like. Which is ordering the improvements for sewer for the Northwest area. Okay, and with this, I am going to uh, let Ryan Withers for RH two explain more of the technical components of the project.
Hello, council. Um, again, Ryan Withers with RH two Engineering. Uh, I was the project manager for the design of these improvements. Shown on the screen here is the preliminary gravity sewer main alignment for the LID that the. Um, LID formation was based on. Uh, this preliminary alignment was. Based on extending a, at the time, recently installed uh, gravity sewer main into the heart of the West Broadmoor area. Uh, the real intent of this project was to. Provide gravity sewer to relatively large midsize large properties that were in a sense landlocked. In terms of their ability to receive sewer service. There was some existing city sewer closer to a number of these properties, but due to the topography. Different elevations of, of the properties, the existing sewer system invert elevations and having uh, the interstate. Uh, sort of head through or cut through um, a portion of the existing collection system. It made connecting to the much closer gravity sewer very difficult. So a number of these properties really needed this project in order to receive sewer service from the city. Ultimately, eight different properties were identified as being able to be included with this LID. And, and directly served by these improvements. Those are eight different properties shown in a variety of different uh, colors on the screen. Um, and the preliminary alignment was essentially based on maximizing the service area that. Uh, in terms of the ability of the improvements to serve these properties as well as some future properties further upstream and. And outside of this area in the future, if or when growth occurs uh, further to the north and to the west in the system. Um, so at this point, we were able to estimate the project costs for the design and the construction of the project. And then begin to review how to allocate those costs to these eight landowners. Uh, we evaluated a number of different methodologies to identify what the assessments could be for these eight properties. Um, ultimately, trying to focus on what, what would be most fair for these eight property owners, depending on what lens you might look at it. One methodology might be very inexpensive for one landowner, but by doing that would be very expensive for another. Look at it through a different lens, the, the inverse of that would happen. So we evaluated a number of different methodologies and. Really were trying to figure out where those different methodologies started to converge, such that an assessment for an individual landowner. Started to become very, very similar regardless of which lens you looked at it through. And where that ultimately resulted in us getting was an assessment methodology that was based on essentially an equation. Um, sixty percent of the method of the assessment, excuse me, sixty percent of the assessment. Being based on that property's flow contribution into the sewer. The other forty percent of the assessment being based on the percentage of frontage. That each individual property had in relation to their seven other neighbors. One caveat to that is two of the properties um, through discussions with the different landowners were. Ultimately determined to not have this LID sewer be extended up to or through their property. So part of those, part of this assessment was based on giving those two properties a fifty percent reduction in their frontage. Portion of the assessment in order to give them a reduction in cost for that. Issue. Okay, and so with that, we identified that that sixty percent flow, forty percent frontage assessment methodology. And then with our estimated project cost at that time, again, this is back in, in early twenty twenty. Identified the preliminary assessment for each of those eight properties. That's what you see on the screen here. Um, and again, that's based on the original estimate of the project. And at that time, a public hearing was held and no dissenting comments or protests took place. So then at that point, the design was able to be completed and construction was able to begin. Um, ultimately, the final alignment is shown uh, on the sort of neon green line on your screen here. Um, if you toggle back in your, in your paperwork, you'll note that it's very similar to the preliminary alignment. Um, but the one major change is that there are now eighty-two parcels instead of eight that are being directly served by this. Project. That is purely the, the result of some of the parcels subdividing or beginning the subdividing process. Um, but overall, the, the overall ownership of, of most of these properties was unchanged from start of the project to today.
And with the design being completed, uh, we are showing now the project design bidding and award technology. Uh, just to kind of recap how we got to where we are today, which the project is now fully completed and has been accepted. So uh, bid advertisement was in October of twenty twenty, so the time for design was about um, seven months. Uh, November of uh, twenty twenty, we did our bid opening. And bid award in December of twenty twenty with construction beginning in the following spring. Which allow for acquisition of materials during a difficult time for acquisition of materials. And then finally, notice to proceed uh, was issued in May of twenty twenty. And we want to uh, highlight that our bid award was actually much lower than our engineer's estimate. And we can attribute that to a very competitive uh, bidding time. Uh, and, and of course, the successful bidder was, was incredibly competitive with their bid. Um, and this will be reflected in the final assessments with benefit to all property owners. Um, a little bit going deeper into the costs that are being assessed. Uh, what you're seeing in the slide is the different um, components of the total project cost. Including design, construction, engineering, all the soft costs uh, in the first line and then easement acquisitions. Construction contract and interim financing, but I want to um, make a few comments regarding items two and three in that list. So easement acquisition, it is important to note that as part of the acquisition, we. Uh, facilitated the acquisition of a, an easement for a forced main. Which would allow for service of one of those parcels that could not have the sewer be readily in, in their frontage. Um, and so that cost for the acquisition for the forced main. Was later assessed specifically to the property benefiting, which in the previous picture, I believe was number two. Uh, and later in the next item, construction contract, we have another call out there. So if you remember, the bid award was lower than the amount that we're showing as construction contract in this slide. And the difference is a change order which was requested by one of the developers in one of those parcels. Needing the alignment of the um, sewer gravity main that we were installing as part of the LID be shifted. To better align with new plans for development, which were not available when we were doing the design. So we accommodated that change, but it was clear that that cost that only benefited that specific parcel. Should be allocated to that specific parcel. And you will see that those two items will show up in the next slides when we are looking at a full table of assessments. They are differentiated from the rest of the calculation. They're in a, in their own column.
So the aforementioned uh, final assessments for each of the properties are shown on this slide and actually the subsequent. Three slides, I'll scroll through them and happy to zoom in on any specific ones we may need to. Essentially, these are the eighty-two different parcels as they stand this week, subdivisions are subdividing is still occurring. But the eighty-two parcels are shown here um, along with their final assessment. These final assessments are being based on the same methodology as the preliminary assessments were based on. That being the sixty percent flow, forty percent frontage calculation methodology with two of the properties receiving. A fifty percent frontage reduction for not being immediately adjacent to the LID sewer. And the other assessment, the easement costs and the change order costs are shown in the. Uh, second column from the right, other assessments, if you will, so. Here, just gonna scroll through, pausing for just a couple of seconds on each, first slide. Second slide, at the very top there, you can see the twelve thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for property number two. That was the forced main easement cost. Actually, just to point it out, going back, the fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for this property is. The change order cost that uh, Ms. Sarah mentioned a few minutes ago. So this is the second slide again, third slide. And the fourth slide with final assessments and then down at the bottom showing the total assessment. Uh, dollar amount that matches the previous slides that we've been showing.
This next slide provides a comparison between preliminary assessment as, as provided at time of formation. Uh, versus the proposed final assessment and we noticed. Uh, we want to point out that all those assessments are lower because the overall project cost is lower. And in the last uh, column, what is shown is the special benefit. As it has been determined by our uh, certified appraiser. And what this number means is the maximum of the, that the assessment could be. It's a cap to the amount for the assessment and in all cases, the assess. The proposed final assessment is lower than the special benefit as determined by the study. Okay, and finally, looking forward, what are the steps from here onward? So we're, we're looking at the schedule with today being the public hearing on final assessment role. And um, unless council decides to extend the hearing. Uh, the proposal is to have the ordinance confirming this final assessments in the next regular meeting, October third. Um, which would lead to publication of that ordinance in the, in the next few days after the ordinance is passed. With um, an appeal period of ten days. And the dates are listed, so October eighteenth would be the end of the, of the appeal period. And uh, once the appeal period ends, there is a treasuries publication and provided that. There are no appeals, this, this is subject to some cyclical action should there be uh. Appeals that are considered and there is action to um, correct those. Um, there's a treasuries publication and notice to property owners that there is a, an opportunity to prepay. The um, the assessed value without being a, having the interest. Uh, including that payment, so they're saving the interest rate there. Um, and there is a thirty day period to the prepayment and after that, there is. Uh, action on the city's staff side where there is a determination on what is the balance left to be paid. And whether bonds or internal funding would be used and um. Basically proceed with the steps, especially if there is bonding involved. And one last slide before the questions. Um, it is important to note that most of these parcels will be subject to further subdivision. And uh, as subdivision and segregation occurs. Uh, there will be a request from the party subdividing and then action from council. That will be required in order to reallocate or redistribute. Those assessments as they are determined today, so that each new parcel creator has its um, corresponding assessment.
Yeah, Ms. Sarah or Mr. Withers. Um, there is an additional expense for the LID. For oversizing and extension, uh, has that been assessed against the property owners within the LID?
No, it has not. It has been uh, deducted from the overall project cost.
And uh, for, again, for either of you. Could these properties be subdivided and developed without sewer?
No, those properties could not be subdivided to be compliant with the comprehensive plan without the existence of sewer in, in their vicinity.
Thank you. Um, before the council asks questions and we turn to any uh, protests. I should um, make one check. Um, are there any council members who wish to make a disclosure under the appearance of fairness doctrine? Any outside contacts with any of the property owners in this area that should be disclosed? Is there anybody present who wishes to challenge any of the council members who are sitting as a board of equalization in this matter? Madam Clerk, the record should reflect that there are no apparent violations of the appearance of fairness doctrine and no challenges to any. Of the council members sitting on the board of equalization. Any questions at this time from the council with respect to uh, the presentation by Ms. Sarah or Mr. Withers?
Any council members have questions?
Madam Clerk, have there been any protest files? It's been about twenty minutes since the last time we asked.
No protests have been received.
Mr. Maloney, I don't know if you want to call for anyone to submit a written protest at this time before. The council determines to um, consider closing the public hearing.
Will do so, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to submit a written uh, protest of um, this action in front of us? Do you use as a number of calls or is one call just fine? Is one call sufficient of the public?
One call is sufficient. The clerk will reflect that there are no written protests filed to this. The record will also reflect and this will be documented more thoroughly. I mean, certain of this material was disclosed in the presentation by Ms. Sarah, but notices of this hearing were sent by mail to each property owner of record as well as published twice prior to this hearing as required by statute. There is reference to the ongoing subdivision in these areas, which you can expect once sewer is being provided. One of the tensions in any of these cases is that the city is regularly checking with the Franklin County Assessor's Office to determine the current property owner of record. And as properties change hands in anticipation of sewer, a property owner who gets a notice in the form that the city sends out asks them to contact the person who may be buying the property or to whom they've sold the property that may not have yet been recorded. The city will continually do that monitoring. So by the time the notices of the final assessment amount and the opportunity to pay assessments is published, I mean, the the mailings may be too different to property owners as a result of those transactions. So I just, for purposes of the record. So that completes the presentation of the city. Having nothing further to present, the council may consider a motion to close the public hearing.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Someone like to make a motion. Councilmember Campos?
May I have any discussion for that or do you just like entertain a motion first?
I believe we've had an opportunity to ask of any questions of staff. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to ask any additional questions.
I just making sure. So I want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Campos and a second by Councilmember Brown. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? All right, motion, the public hearing has been closed.
Thank you. As indicated during the presentation, having considered the presentation before the city council, staff will then prepare a proposed ordinance for your consideration, which will incorporate proposed findings and conclusions for your consideration and discussion at the next, excuse me, on the October third agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, and I'd like to note that I think the first time I had to run a meeting in in place of former Mayor Matt Watkins, I think, was an item just like this. And I had to be schooled very carefully on what to say and what not to say. So appreciate the continued patience and I think I was more elegant this time than the first time. All right, we'll move on to item nine on our agenda, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. First item up is Resolution number four-two-five-one, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. Director White?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. As council is aware, I'm sure setting this item sets the docket for analysis of the comprehensive plan amendments that have been received this amendment cycle. The Agenda Report provides a summary and an inventory of the acreages involved with the various proposals and the exhibits list the proposals themselves. The proposed resolution also noted in the Agenda Report does not include the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Hopkins proposal, which was, as council is aware, located west of the Moore Mansion and determined by consensus at the workshop and public hearing for this item that occurred back, well, a couple of weeks ago now. And staff would recommend counsel's favorable consideration of this proposed resolution.
All right, thank you, Director White. Any comments or questions from council on this on this item?
I did see that we, I'm assuming we, I know I received some mail regarding, I believe, pulling an item off this. I'm a little concerned that that was untimely. So I just, I want to express or at least acknowledge that, let's see, I'm just trying to pull it up. Yeah, it was a request to not approve item double oh six, the Menden, that was from Mr. Mendenhall. But a request not to approve that. Again, I think, given the timeliness, it's it's a bit late, but I wanted to make sure that we all recognize that or or if anyone didn't receive that, that you are aware of that email. It did have a handful of signatures, I think, a couple of dozen in opposition, but again, I don't know that it's timely and I just wanted to at least express that and thank the constituents for writing in.
So on that, Director White, can you talk to us about timeliness and next steps in the process? Will those, that feedback be considered at the next step in this process?
No, that that involves the Peak Rezone, which is an item coming on the agenda. And and Mr. Ferguson will provide an update to council on the quasi judicial nature of that item. This resolution for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is legislative.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
I was gonna save you guys the effort and go on to Rick and explain. I had the same thing happen. I thought it was a CPA amendment and it's actually already passed the CPA and again, it's our next item we have open here. I was under the wrong impression too. I thought it was part of the CPAs.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to offer a little bit of more clarification, see if I can muddy the water a little more, right? So the, yeah, the, there was a comment received related to this item that some folks got. There is no concern with regard to appearance of fairness or any of that stuff because this is a pure legislative decision. We did take a look at the 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 comment that was made and made sure that there is, the allegation was that the council needed to make a finding to exclude anyone from this process. Going through the Growth Management Act as well as our code, it's pretty clear that the council isn't supposed to make any particular finding at this point. You're truly just using your your own judgment to decide whether you want staff to move forward and and explore these options, which is purely legislative and and at your discretion. So with that, that's, we did reference in the resolution number one, kind of the first line there, we referenced the section that that you're under considering those criteria in seven BII. Those are the ones that we talked about last time. So you've considered those and you've decided, or if you move forward on this resolution, you're deciding that these are the ones considering that criteria that you're comfortable having staff pursue.
Excellent. So I was just to remind anyone listening in the audience that we are not making a final decision on any of these items. We're just simply recommending them forward for additional scrutiny and work through city staff. All right, with that, I don't see any other lights on from council. Is there a member of public that wants to speak on on this particular item? All right, thank you very much. With that, if there's no other, if there's no further questions for staff, then I would ask, ask for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution number forty-two fifty-one, establishing a list of docket items for further evaluation for the twenty-twenty-two Comprehensive Plan Amendments Docket.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campos. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? All right, item is approved unanimously. All right, moving on to to the next item, item B, which is a quasi judicial matter, ordinance number four-six-zero-eight, Peak Contractors Rezone RS twelve to R one. Director White, and please, Mr. Ferguson, when you're ready to weigh in, please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. And this item involves a rezone for a little, well, about one and a half acres located west Ella Street and Road forty. The existing zoning is RS twelve. The proposal is to rezone that parcel to R one for future plating at a later date. The hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on this proposal back in August and has recommended council approval of the proposed rezone. And just a note for further information to council, although the home is visible on the aerial photograph, it has since been demolished. This home was unsalvageable. It was home to multiple code violations over many years and was useless for habitation. And so with that, council or staff would recommend council approval of the rezone that conforms to the hearing examiner recommendation.
Mr. Ferguson, please.
Great, thank you. So this says, previously mentioned, is a quasi judicial hearing. It is a hearing to render a final decision on the materials that are presented. It's defined as a proceeding which the council defines the legal rights, duties and privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance and appearance. Council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect a council member personally. C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, prior to hearing the facts. D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. And I think there's obviously been several folks that have received specific correspondence, written correspondence from folks related to this. They are constituents, it sounds like, who have contacted council members directly. So with that, that kind of adds a little, kind of a plot twist to it because the statute is very clear that during the pendency of any quasi judicial proceeding, no member of a decision-making body, which would be, in this case, would be the council, shall engage in ex parte communications with opponents or proponents with respect to the proposal unless the proceedings, unless it's placed on the record and then somebody has a right to rebut those those communications, the assertions that were made in those communications. There is one, a couple of little exceptions at the end. The one that most likely applies in this case says that nor does this prohibition, so the previously read prohibition, preclude correspondence between a citizen and his or her elected official if any such correspondence is made part of the record when it pertains to the subject matter of the quasi judicial proceeding. So what I have done is gotten copies of all the correspondence that council members received and then forwarded on to me. I've got copies of those and will make those written portions of the record. So I think that should take care of the disclosures with regard to any council members communication. I will say though, for the record, the the ones that I have, the communication, the correspondence from the citizen, citizens, I should say, are on September fourteenth at nine forty-eight from a person named Dan Mendenhall. I have another one from on September eighteenth at two fifty-seven PM from a Kim Chamberland. And I have a third communication correspondence from Dan Mendenhall as well on, that's today at twelve thirty. So I would say those are the ones that I'll submit to the city clerk and make sure that they're part of the record on this hearing. So I don't think anyone will need to go through disclosing any other contents related to those communications. But if you do have other communications that you've had, this would be the time to make those known. So with that, I'll submit these to the clerk.
Question for Mr. Ferguson, does that include any response back to those communications?
Yes, we, those would need, those would need to be disclosed on the record.
So just for disclosure record, I did respond back. And again, this goes back to my comment to Mr. Serrano. My response back was to not even the correct item. And then it was a clarification in terms of, I believe, Mr. Mendenhall that, oh, I have the wrong item, I'm mistaken. And so if you'd like, I can forward that sent email to the clerk. So that can also be pertaining to the record.
All right, it's.
Any other disclosures?
Any other disclosures from council?
Okay, and then finally, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify?
Excuse me, I would, I also received emails. I cannot recall there was exactly the persons that you described, but I'm going to go through emails and forward that to you or to the clerk?
To the clerk.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, is this an item we can move forward on with those those items being attached to the record after we've made a decision? Or do we need to make that, or do we need to delay a decision and tell those, ah, please submit it?
No, as long as they, on the record, been been made part of the record, they and and folks have committed to making sure that those get to the city clerk in physical format, those disclosures have been made at this time. So I don't think there's anything any of those disclosures wouldn't prevent proceeding with this matter tonight. The only other question for the audience is, is there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of the council from participating in this matter?
I'm not quite sure what that means.
So what that means is, is do you feel like there's anyone that has disclosed anything related to this matter that you think disqualifies them from proceeding? Nope? Okay, you bet. So with that, we're free to proceed.
Excellent. And Mr. Ferguson, just one more quick question. Do we need to disclose whether we feel any of this communication is biased to us or is it because it's now part of the record that's now moved because it's well, part of the, part of the record?
Well, I think what you would say is that would, that would follow the kind of the very last kind of catch-all. Is there any other conflict that the council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially? So if anyone believes that based on those communications, now that they're tainted and they can't move forward, this would be the time to bail out.
Not seeing enough from council here. And Mr. Ferguson, I have one further question. Is this an item that we would invite members of the public to come speak up on if they're repeating anything that they've done before? Or does, how do, or would we just simply not allow public comments for this item?
Definitely not at this particular time. So there's really two choices that the council has with this particular matter. The this rezone request went to the hearing examiner. It has gone through that process. There is now part of a, there's a hearing examiner recommendation with findings that's been forwarded to council. Based on our code and state law, there's really only two options. The council can move forward and adopt the hearing examiner recommendation or find that they, based on a motion, could determine that further examination is required, a further assessment is required, and then that would trigger notice requirements, formal notice requirements for people to come in and testify about the closed record only.
Excellent, thank you for that. And then last item, Director White, were there any appeals of the hearing examiner recommendation in front of us?
No, Mayor Protem, there were, and I neglected to mention that there were not.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the thorough thoroughness of this. We want to make sure we get this right. With that, are there any questions? Again, quasi judicial matter here. Is there any questions for staff from council? Councilmember Campos?
I just wanted to address another comment. When you asked Director Ferguson about public hearings, it looks like the rest of our items, and I could be mistaken, but they don't fall under the public hearings and I also trying to get clarification ahead of everything before we address each individual item. We're under Section nine ordinances, resolutions not related to hearings, so I'm under the assumption that the rest of these are not part of the public hearing process.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm not tracking. So you're saying that number, we're at number nine in the agenda?
Yeah, number nine, but the rest, so not just this item in particular. So Mayor Protem Maloney asked about, and you're opening this up for public hearing. I'm under the impression that the rest of our items on our docket the rest of the night on our agenda. We're not doing public hearings.
That's correct.
Correct. It's public comment, though, not public hearings. Those are two different items. So for items on our business agenda, as you may recall, during our public comment portion, we ask for any items that's not later on our agenda. So if there's a member of the public that wanted to speak on one of our items specifically on this, obviously the quasi judicial are an exception to that. But other further items, we may accept a public comment and the members of public would expect us to allow for some public comment on those. With that, so with the item in front of us, item B for the ordinance number forty-six oh eight. So are there any other comments or questions for staff? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number forty-six oh eight, approving a rezone at twenty-twenty-five Road forty from RS twelve to R one and further authorized publication by summary only.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campos. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Signated by Councilmember Roach. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. With that, move on to item C, another quasi judicial matter, ordinance number forty-six oh nine, Ike Meyer Mullen Road sixty-eight and Burns Rezone RT to R four. Director White.
Again, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and, and this is another rezone, uh, just south of, uh, Burns Road and, uh, east of Road sixty-eight. The existing zoning is R T, which is residential transition. It, it's basically a holding zone. The proposed, uh, zoning is R four. It's for a twenty-six acre site. Um, as, as stated, south of Burns Road and east of Road sixty-eight adjacent to the existing subdivision to the east. The hearing examiner also conducted a public hearing on this item in August and has forwarded council a recommendation that the site, uh, be precluded from developing, uh, apartment units, which was, uh, the focus of the public testimony at the hearing. And the applicant has also indicated that that was never their intent in the first place and they, uh, or, uh, have submitted a letter expressing that support. So, um, staff would, uh, recommend councils favorable consideration of this, uh, rezone request and, uh, recommendation from the hearing examiner. And again, uh, there have been no appeals of this recommendation.
Excellent. Thank you, Director White. Mr. Ferguson?
Uh, just, uh, quickly one more time, this is a quasi judicial matter. Uh, it's a proceeding in which the council defines illegal rights and duties of, of, uh, specific parties. Uh, it has to be, uh, fair. The appearance fairness doctrine applies and it must be fair in three respects, form, substance and appearance. Uh, council members should consider whether they have the potential, uh, have potential conflicts related to the demonstrated bias. Uh, a demonstrated bias, any direct or indirect financial interest, uh, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues, uh, prior to hearing the facts, whether there's been any ex parte contact, or whether, uh, council, uh, council member has conflict, uh, that they believe would prevent them from, uh, hearing this matter fairly and partially. So at this time, uh, any of those disclosures would need to be made for the record.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Any disclosures by council? Uh, councilmember Compost?
Yeah, a short one. Um, there's been no ex parte communication, but I've made a disclosure on another Eichmeyer, rezone slash, I think, addition or annexation. So, uh, I know one of the Eichmeyers, we have not spoken on this. I believe I can act without bias and that will be my disclosure.
So thank you, councilmember Compost. Any other disclosures from council?
Great. Uh, and so, uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify any member of council from participating in this proceeding? Seeing that?
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from, from, uh, council to staff? I do have one question, uh, Director White. I, I didn't see a lot in the packet as to where the source of the, um, agreement was prohibiting courtyard apartments. Can you, um, just expand a little bit more that? Where was the source of that, um, agreement? What, where that? Was, was it the city recommendation? Was it the developer? Was it, uh, how, how did that come about? I just didn't understand that.
The, um, during the public hearing, the, uh, applicant's agent, uh, stated numerous times that New Tradition Homes was not planning on building, uh, mo- apartment units on this site, which, uh, was, or seemed to be at least the focus of the testimony and opposition. The hearing examiner provided an opportunity for, um, New Tradition or through the applicant's agent to, um, state that in writing. And so the hearing was opened basically on, on Monday after the hearing examiner meeting that occurred on Wednesday. And that was provided. And then from that, the hearing examiner, um, uh, created a concomitant agreement for accompanying the ordinance that precludes apartment construction. They do, apparently they have a plan to construct a variety of single family, uh, housing opportunities.
Excellent. Um, Director White, outside of this particular hearing or, um, item, I, I don't wanna certainly muddy up any of this with, with questions about that, but I'd be very interested in understanding, um, um, what the process is for, for some of that as to when those can be introduced. I know that, or, um, by whom. I know I've seen some hearing examiners, um, recommendations that include a requirement for some of these. I'd be interested in understanding how those, how those come about a little further outside of this item, um, um, and not related to this property on a matter of hand.
Certainly.
Thank you, Director White. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. I'd ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number forty-six oh nine, approving a rezone at Road sixty-eight and Burns Road from R T to R four with restrictions as contained in the concomitant, concomitant agreement and further authorized by publication by summary only.
Right. It's a motion by councilmember Compost. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by councilmember Brown. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, we have, we, we pass it unanimously. Move on to item number D, uh, resolution number forty-two fifty-two, Attorney General Distributors, uh, Settlement Agreement, Opioid Litigation Settlement. Uh, Mr. Ferguson?
Great, thank you. Just, uh, real quick, this is, uh, a, uh, follow-up on the, the matter that we did, uh, not too long ago. The, what, what, uh, was referred to as the one Washington agreement, uh, the, uh, memorandum of understanding that the city entered into, uh, which essentially, uh, this is the, kinda the, the final, um, uh, step in that process. And what it does is it really kinda combines a couple of things. The process that we were, uh, formerly involved with, uh, was with, uh, an, a, a firm out of Seattle called Keller Rohrbach that was representing local, uh, government entities. Uh, the Attorney General's office was pursuing their own separate litigation with regard to this. Uh, those processes, uh, eventually combined and that's what you're seeing, uh, before you hear is kind of a combination of a, what we refer to in our industry as a global settlement. So, uh, that means, uh, all claims are, uh, forever barred from moving forward. So that's how, uh, folks can, uh, move on and, and basically pay the, uh, for the price and, and then they move on and knowing that they're not gonna continue to have trickle in lawsuits. So, uh, that's really what this is. Uh, it's, it's the same, uh, a lot of the same kind of analysis, a maximum attorney fees, uh, for, uh, for the attorneys that were involved in negotiating the settlement of fifteen percent. Uh, I'll just highlight a few of the, the greatest hits here. Um, it is based, uh, the, uh, distribution will be based on those three, um, those three categories that we talked about last time about, uh, the number of opioids that were shipped, uh, the number of opioid deaths that occurred in the county, and then the number of people who are known to have suffering, uh, to know to be suffering from opioid disorder. Uh, those were really the things that, uh, were utilized to come up with a factor to be able to, uh, distribute the money. So, uh, with that, uh, you'll see, uh, in the agenda report, uh, towards the very bottom there, where it talks about the maximum, uh, Washington state abatement amount is four hundred and thirty-three, uh, and some odd, uh, change, a million. Uh, fifty percent of that will be retained by the state of Washington. Fifty percent of that will be, uh, then, uh, further distributed to, uh, local governments. Uh, the requirement is for a population, um, of over ten thousand. So, uh, to be able to be eligible for a direct distribution, otherwise, um, the other, um, distributions will take place through the county. So in our specific case, the only folks that will receive any money directly from this would be the city of Pasco. Uh, everybody else will receive it through Franklin County. Uh, the other thing that's, uh, uh, so that, that actually works out, uh, uh, Mr. Zabel, uh, uh, did some quick, quick math for, uh, his attorneys who, uh, struggle with math. And, uh, it looks like that's, uh, likely gonna be somewhere, depending on how many people comply or, or join the settlement. It looks like we'll be somewhere between seven hundred and forty thousand, uh, and nine hundred and twenty thousand over seventeen year periods. So, uh, with that, we obviously would recommend that, um, we move forward to this. There is a, there's a critical mass number that has to take place for this to actually, um, turn into a, a settlement, which is a hundred and sixteen jurisdictions, uh, that, uh, would, would, as a minimum, a hundred and twenty-five is, uh, is optimal because then that's when we reach the maximum settlement amount. So, um, I have received calls from everyone to try to get this thing, uh, pushed through, uh, by September twenty-third. So that's why we're here with a pretty quick turnaround is, um, uh, they need, uh, they need their numbers by the twenty-third. So with that, happy to try to answer any questions and, uh, would recommend moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Um, members of council, any questions or comments for staff on this? Uh, one quick question, were we, would we need to, as, assuming we get a settlement out of this, does it need to be specifically directed towards recovery actions or abatement actions or anything like that? Would it end up being fund, fund restricted? Or is that something that we'll talk about later when we reach, um, sort of our final settlement?
That, there is some more information on that. Uh, Craig Briggs in our office has been taking the lead on it and had been attending a lot of the webinars. So he would have a lot of information on exactly how the monies can be utilized. So I think there are some, uh, I don't wanna say strings, but there are some directions that we'll get, uh, related to how the money has to be used. But it also, uh, it sounds like it's not gonna be something that, uh, we would have to create, something that we don't already have. Um, so it wouldn't be, uh, it would be, it would be money that we can utilize.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. All right, seeing no further questions from, uh, council, um, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number forty-two fifty-two, approving the Attorney General's Distributors Washington Settlement Agreement and further authorize the city manager to execute participation, form an allocation agreement.
All right, we have a motion from councilmember Compost. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, sent. Seconded by councilmember Milne. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, thank you for that. Uh, moving on to item E, resolution number forty-two fifty-three, Community Economic Revitalization Board Grant Opportunity. Director White.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, this item involves, uh, council authorization of a, of submission of a grant application to the Community Economic Development Board or, or Curb. Uh, it's a bit of an unusual requirement to authorize submission, but it's part of the grant application. So in essence, uh, council approved, uh, a fifty thousand dollar amount for an economic strategy plan in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. This is, we think, a good opportunity to, uh, double that amount if, uh, if the grant is successful for an amount up to fifty thousand dollars. So a hundred thousand dollars in total. Um, the agenda report describes some of the minimum items that have to be, uh, considered in the grant application and in the plan, should it happen. And, uh, this is, uh, a great opportunity, we think, and we stand a good chance of receiving this grant, uh, award. So, um, should that award be granted to the city of Pasco, we'll return to council for authorization of acceptance.
Excellent. Thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Serrano?
Are there any prohibitive or limiting conditions on this, either the use, application or other restrictions? Uh, they could make the fifty thousand dollars more burdensome than receiving it?
At this, at this point, we're not aware of any, but that's the purpose of returning to council once we find out exactly what strings are involved with accepting the grant.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Cause I mean, you know, to Joe Public and to me, fifty thousand dollars would be nice. Um, but in our large operational budget, it's kind of a drop in the bucket. And, you know, if we have to do fifty thousand dollars worth of work to achieve it, it might not be worth it. So look forward to hearing more. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, any other comments or questions from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number four-two-five-three, authorizing a submission of an application for a community economic revitalization board grant in the approximate amount of fifty thousand dollars for city of Pasco economic development strategy, strategic.
All right, we have a motion from councilmember Brown. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Compost. Alls in favor, signify, but, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Excellent, thank you. Um, on to item F, resolution number forty-two fifty-four, supplemental employment agreement to the city manager's contract. Uh, Mr. Ferguson has you listed here.
Okay, I, uh, guess I'll dig this one. I, uh, well, let's see here. So yeah, this was a, uh, an item that we talked about, uh, where our, um, city manager will be, um, at the end of October, uh, will no longer be the, um, uh, the designated city manager. And this is an opportunity for the city to be able to utilize those services and that expertise, um, through the end of the year. Uh, we would, uh, we have, we'd be in a situation where, um, Mr. Zabel will still be a city employee, uh, and still be able to, uh, use the, his leave banks, uh, which have been, uh, accruing, uh, because, uh, he won't go on vacation very often. So, uh, now, uh, this is a, this is a forced vacation. So, uh, but, uh, so this is really an opportunity for, uh, us to be able to continue to utilize, uh, Mr. Zabel's, uh, uh, experience and then, uh, give him an opportunity to be able to work down some of these leave banks, uh, and then, uh, but, uh, he would not be, the, the big distinction will be as of October thirty-first, he would not be the statutorily defined city manager. Uh, council would need to, uh, appoint an interim or a, a new city manager by that time. Um, and so this will be, uh, this is a supplement to his current contract, uh, authorizing that change. Uh, but then still, uh, giving us an opportunity to keep that direct access.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Uh, it sounds like you didn't get notification that you were gonna be presenting that item from the current city manager. So we should take, we should take that into account. We should take that into advisement when we're reviewing this. All right, uh, councilmember Compost?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm struggling with, uh, section two on this and I think I might need clarification come January. So is there any way we can just push this out till next year before, no, I'm kidding, I, I have nothing.
Yeah, my comment was if, Dave, if I know vote this, uh, are you gonna stick around another year? And if so, will you still be buried at that point?
Yeah, I, I had, uh, negotiations with a fourteen-year-old and ten-year-old granddaughter over the weekend when they realized. And, you know, I had to convince them that, no, I'll be on vacation, you know? My wife and I had already negotiated and then, of course, we've had a chance to talk recently, but I, I do appreciate council's consideration of this. It gives me an opportunity to kinda just be around as we kinda work through some of the, uh, tail end, well, tail end and middle and beginning of some issues that are pretty complex, that, uh, you know, I have some, I have some institutional knowledge and history on and maybe can benefit. Probably a better thing for the city than me getting a big chunk of vacation payout. And honestly, it feels better to me than that. So I appreciate your considering.
Mr. Zabel, I know that if, um, someone calls you, um, on November first, you're probably still gonna take the call anyway. So this is a way for us to make sure things are above board on that and I appreciate that as well. Um, I do, I would note that there, there, you do have a, um, estimated fiscal impact and I'm gonna assume that's kind of a cap on how many hours you spend on spending away from vacation. Um, but that will, um, I, I assume that'll be all con- controlled by the acting city manager or, uh, as an interim city manager or as whatever, whoever we designate as a permanent city manager will be in control of your contacts. So we should negotiate how to reach out or, or others to reach out. We'll be through whoever's sitting in that chair.
That's correct.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Any other jokes that, that anyone wants to make at Eric's or, um, or Dave's expense? All right, uh, hearing none, um, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll take this one. I move to approve resolution number forty-two fifty-four, approving a supplemental employment agreement to city manager's current professional services agreement.
All right, we have a motion from councilmember Compost. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and seconded by councilmember Roach. Um, alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, that moves us on to item G, resolution number forty-two fifty-five, Kerr Ferguson Law, P L, P L L C, amended agreement for legal services. Uh, city manager Zabel.
Well, good evening again, Mayor Council. So, um, as you're aware, the city's enjoyed a long and satisfactory relationship with, uh, Kerr Ferguson Law, and our fact has been since two thousand and seven. And, uh, this council is well aware, there's been a, a significant increase in volume and complexity of legal services required by the city due to growth, you know, and the, those legal services, the man form have, uh, grown proportionally, uh, which has placed some increased demands, uh, clearly on, uh, Kerr Ferguson Law. Uh, as we previously discussed, it's, uh, timely to update the relationship through the proposed amended agreement. And subsequent to our most recent discussion, the city, myself and, uh, uh, Kerr Ferguson Law, uh, Mr. Ferguson have negotiated the proposed amendment for legal services, uh, and just hit the highlights, uh, this agreement, we replaced the prior agreement. Uh, it establishes a twenty-four month term, but it would renew, uh, automatically unless notice is provided by sixty days by either party prior to expiration. It also provides, as we just, uh, kinda discussed, uh, a one hundred and eighty day termination for any reason, any time triggered by advanced notice by either party. So I think that's, that's something we had discussed and, and, uh, uh, from the city's perspective, um, that gives you some protection, also gives, uh, Kerr Ferguson Law some protection if the, uh, arrangement is not, uh, to your satisfaction at some point in time in the future. Uh, establishes hourly rates per section three. Uh, you'll note the rates are pretty favorable compared to market. And those represent, uh, K F L's municipal, uh, rate for legal services. Uh, and then it also does something that we haven't had in the prior agreement, that was establish some expectation. So article twelve kinda walks through what those are. I thought paragraph F was particularly noteworthy for council and it assures the city manager and individual council members access to the city attorney to obtain legal advice related to their respective, uh, executive or legislative roles. I think that's really important because of the, you know, and we, we had, we had talked before, for the most part, the city attorney works for the city manager, but council- For the most part, the city attorney works for the city manager, but council needs access to the city attorney. Perhaps independent of the city manager, particularly on legislative issues. So, I think that spelling that out, it's not something we had before, I think is really important. So the approval of the agreement will provide for uh continued high-quality services uh during a time where numerous projects uh critical to the future development of the city are underway. Uh, allows for greater security, as we had discussed, for the city and KFL. But in the ca- case of uh Kerr Ferguson Law, it provides a level of insurance necessary to add additional legal staff. And given the volume we have, that's something they need to be able to do. And then finally, uh, terms are, of the agreement are such that it does not preclude uh council from consideration of a full-time uh city attorney at some point in time in the future. Uh, obviously, that's a con- uh concept that would take uh some additional thought and uh analysis on the part of the council and staff, but uh this gives you, gives you a little bit of a way out, the six-month thing of if that's the window you needed, or two years, or if it never happens. So, staff would recommend approval.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Zabel. Uh, questions or comments from council? Uh, Councilmember Roach.
Yes, I, I, you know, looked at the three questions that you had in the staff report, and I think um just to start with um, the need for more resources for our legal counsel um is something that I can acknowledge and, and say that that rate adjustment does seem like it's under um market rate. Uh, however, from previous conversation with general conversation about, with city manager about understanding you know, the relationship of council, city council members, I'm gonna have to spell this out every time because there's legal counsel and city council, and I don't wanna get them confused. You know, I, I was under, under the understanding this was uh just a a contracted relationship for city manager as opposed to for city council, and it sounds like from our conversation um, there is a dotted line for legal counsel to city council members. And so, you know, one of the things inside this, uh, you know, uh summary prior to the resolution was um, you know, quality of service and years of service, and so wanting to be able to ask the question of city manager, you know, how, how does uh evaluation happen of contracted services? You know, I understand that that probably happens with staff, hopefully at least once a year. Um, but what does that look like um for professional agreement um contracts?
Well, for, I'm just, this clearly is a, a pretty special relationship. Uh, it's essentially continuous. And uh, within the organization, aside from council members, the city attorney has a number of clients. Uh, public works, police, a lot of our uh finance department, a lot of our HR department. A lot of our departments have a one-on-one relationship with uh city legal and uh city manager's office essentially oversees that. And uh, we're, we're pretty attuned. City attorney attends all of our uh weekly um executive leadership teams, so he's basically a part of the team. And so, we're, we're pretty attuned when things are happening and when they aren't. Obviously, there's a huge workload right now. And uh, a lot of the departments are needing legal services. What's one of the reasons I think this will be advantageous to us? Council approves uh in terms of allowing uh Kerr Ferguson to staff up is we have to prioritize a limited resource, a pretty limited resource. So, w- we know there is um timeliness in terms of wanting to get things done quicker and move through things quicker. But we also have to face the reality that we have to really prioritize at the staff level uh what it is that's most important and what we need to push through first. And so with a little bit more uh assurance on uh their part, where they can actually invest and be competitive in uh additional staffing, uh that can benefit all of the efforts of the city.
Thank you for sharing that, and I, I guess what I would say in response is that, you know, there was um I don't believe council members have really had to have that conversation about um, you know, having that same sort of evaluation. Um, and it seemed like in uh previous, there were there were other discussions that didn't get to be had. Um, and so I had been hoping that if this was a contract amendment, um, this would come to a public workshop first so that those conversations could be had through public workshop and, and conversation with city staff prior to just being on a regular business meeting. And so, I mean, I'm interested in knowing from my fellow council members how, you know, if there were other ideas of what they were trying to consider with legal counsel in the greater future. I b- I believe the twenty-four month term is what was, threw me off because um prior conversation was twelve months. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach, and I think I saw Councilmember Campos next, please.
I'm gonna piggyback back off Councilwoman Roach. Um, some things I saw in here, I mean, I think it's a fairly well-written thing. I just, you know, under section twelve, performance and execution, you know, Councilwoman Roach brings up a good point, and, you know, Mr. Zabel, you do too, but it says in here that um attorneys must be quick, available by phone, with reasonably fast response to emails and faxes, including for emergency situat- okay, well reasonably, what if my consideration or my definition of reasonable is different than in other council members? I didn't see anything in here unless I missed it. You know, if we decide to, I'm gonna use an anecdote in here, it's gonna sound kinda crazy, but if for whatever reason Eric decides to take off, live his life on a yacht, just reaping his riches, and they've got some young hotshot out of Gonzaga who just runs rogue with Kerr Ferguson, I don't see where we, as the council, can say, well, we find it unreasonable now, he's not getting back to us within twenty-four hours, forty-eight, whatever a reasonable definition is. Your predecessor may say, well, no, I think that's fine. But I don't see anywhere where we can then say, well, we as the council supersede you and say, we want, like, to go ahead and get this hotshot to pack his bags and, you know. So, I personally, just on this as it is, I'd like to see a little bit more clarity there because just like you said, I kinda was under the impression, I don't have the context that some of you guys have with, you know, former lawyers and city coun- or uh legal counsel, but um, my assumption was again, that I would go through city manager. But understanding how this is written, I kinda have that, like, like Councilwoman Roach said, I've got that dotted line, so a little clarity there would be nice, but I also think Councilwoman Roach brought up a good point, you know, we might have had some discussions about you know, what an alternate plan might look like, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to this as it is, but I do think more information would be nice. Think that's it.
I can speak to a couple of those if, Eric. So, one, uh, you know, the city council is the city. So, what, while the city manager may manage the contract, if the city council determines it's time to put a hundred-and-eighty-day notice in they have absolutely the authority to put the hundred-and-eighty-day notice in and direct city manager to, to make that happen. So that's, that is your out. So, we, we did, when we talked previously, we, you know, there were some terms kicked around. I will throw out there, and one of the things we chatted about when we uh negotiated the, the, the um term of the agreement. Uh, one year and two year was discussed, and we talked about this before. Uh, two years gives some assurance that you can actually, and I, if, if uh Mr. Ferguson wants to speak to it, he's certainly welcome to, but you know, from my perspective, two years gives them some assurance to be able to actually recruit somebody, and a hundred-and-eighty days gives them time to make arrangements if council trick, pulls that trigger. So this is really a six-month agreement, if you look at it from that. You, you can, you can get out of this the day after tomorrow with written, well, at your next Monday night. It's, it's six months and one week, you know, unless you held a special meeting. And um, so I think, you know, whatever alternate um arrangement you might, might wanna make, you would certainly have time to be able to do that. It will take you far longer than six months to, if you came to that conclusion, to get that ready and prepare the job description, and get out there, do the recruitment and selection, and, and have somebody on board. So uh, with a hundred-and-eighty-day out, you're, you have pretty adequate time to to uh look at another alternative for city attorney service if that's a wish of the council in the future.
Thank you for that. I don't, I don't disagree, I'm just seeing how that could be complicated, because again, we aren't allowed to discuss amongst ourselves outside of, you know, this, so you, I'm picking up, you didn't quite say this, but I'm picking up that we could ask them to hold an executive session to do a performance review on that hotshot out of Gonzaga.
Performance of a public official.
Okay, that's what I'm.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos. Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Just gonna echo all of that, but where I'm at is in the last conversation, my interpretation was the two topics were the term twelve, um, uh, uh, one to two years, um, either one, as long as we're clear. Um, and that the tracks have been laid properly. Uh, the term is, is not really my issue, it's just having the opportunity to break this down to make sense, so that we're clear on how we have access to the city attorney. So that, that's where I'm kinda left, I'm kinda left off there, cause in the meeting when we did talk, we talked about all these great things, but I thought we were gonna get, sit down and hammer it out, and then bring it back and be clear on making a motion if, if, if that sounds right to, to my fellow council members. I don't know if I'm, I'm not on this one on my own, but that's what I interpret it, so can we clarify that, or are we good? Yeah.
Sure, I can speak to all those things. Uh, first of all, we'll take it from the top though. Uh, I have a canoe. I don't have like a boat as I have, uh, uh, the, no, I'm just teasing. Uh, so a couple of things, uh, and I feel like maybe we've kinda gotten uh, got a little bit off track, we've, we've got our wires crossed a little bit with regard to where we're at. So essentially what we have is, we have I don't wanna say emergency, we have a critical situation on my end. Uh, and what I mean by that is, is that I've got a firm that's uh understaffed, I've got demand that is off the charts. And uh, to Ms. Roach's point earlier, uh, about evaluations, um, and I think everybody on this stage would probably say this is uh I get evaluated uh once a week on Tuesday mornings at nine o'clock, uh, when everybody starts telling me oh, you got my thing, you got my thing, you got my, I mean, I'm the only one that comes, I'm outside the city, I'm the contractor, I show up. Uh, I get my customer service review uh then, and it's clear whether I'm meeting that expectation or not. Um, and so, uh, and it's, it's, it's tough because those expectations aren't being met by staff. Um, the number one concern uh is not the quality, it's not uh, uh, my bubbly personality, it's, it's that they just don't, can't get enough of what they need. Uh, and I can't get enough resources to get them what they need, um, because of the situation we're in. So, this is a um an emergency situation, but this is a situation where we need to fix something so that I can, I can decide whether I'm gonna be able to get the staff that I need to fix the acute problem, and we defined acute uh based on our, our previous conversation as it started to, to evolve was uh in the one-to-two-year range, so that I can recruit and be able to get some folks to be able to help me out. Uh, the way, the, the current, uh, so, so there's that aspect of, the other aspect I would say is the, as, as the city manager uh ref- uh was referring to, um, you know, it really is kinda the best of both worlds because what it does is, it puts us in a situation where we've got a, a two-year term. Uh, it would, it automatically renews at the end of the two years unless somebody gives notice sixty days before, but at any time uh, either party can give uh six months notice. Uh, and that gives everybody time to readjust. Uh, I'm gonna need time to redefine roles and spin up different business uh to, to replace that. But at the same time, what's happening now is you guys are eating me out of house and home, and so what that means is I gotta get some commitment so that I can continue to do that, so I can try to meet that need, that, that exponential need that's, that's taking place right now in the city. So, that's really why back to your point, Ms. Roach, that's really why I think maybe we got our wires crossed with regard to what those next step were gonna be. This was uh to get something in, in, in a cohesive structure with some time on it, so that I could get out and get recruiting and get some help. So that's where that came from. May- maybe that wasn't, we, maybe we didn't all walk away with that same impression, but that's really where, where this came from.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Um, Councilmember Serrano.
Yeah, I'll be the dissenting voice here. I'm admittedly, I, I wouldn't sign this contract if I were you, but, but that's, that's your business issue. No, I mean, I, I think we're placing well more than is reasonable on your office, and we're giving very little. I had a phone call, literally as I was walking out of my office today. I have a guy that wants me to a- appeal something to the Ninth Circuit, which is a, a pretty impressive case um, involving Clean Water Act, like really big issues. I said, call back in a month, hopefully, hopefully, we haven't missed your deadline to appeal. If not, find someone else. I see twelve echo. You must review contracts and other materials, materials within a day or two. There's a, a reasonableness that uh a- and then we're adding, you know, these additional lines of communication. We're getting well beyond the reasonableness here. I, I just I don't think we should be trying to place everything on Mr. Ferguson here. I mean, uh, again, it's, it's his business, so I'm sure he'll sign this, but um, I look at this, and from the give to get, we are certainly giving very little as a council and, and getting quite a bit. I mean, I, I don't even know what market rates are, but I know a hundred-and-eighty-five an hour is, is like either below tier for a smaller city uh, or like the bottom, like we're talking minimum wage essentially, so um I mean, I don't know. I, I just, my opinion here is, if we keep asking more, we're not going to get what we want out of what we're asking, so I think we really ought to contemplate. Uh, we talked about fairness here a lot, and I, I think this is unquestionably a one-sided contract here. So, move forward with that caution. But, no, I, I think we really need to be careful what we're asking for and what we're trying to achieve out of this.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Any other, Councilmember Campos?
Mr. Ferguson doesn't sign this, he better start selling his canoe, and I'll be looking on Craigslist for it. But I think, and I don't, I don't wanna steal anyone's thunder, but there was some discussion about, you know, in-staff counsel. And I wanna kick that back to see if that, that was explored and, and what determinations found, do we think we'll be seeing that in the future, because um, that may alleviate further pressure off of Mr. Ferguson in order to provide you know, satisfactory products to uh council.
So I can speak to a little bit of that. So, uh, Pasco is, the city of Pasco is the largest city in the state of Washington that still contracts out for all their city attorney services. Uh, the, you're, you're not by much, uh, City of Redmond, um, you've probably heard of them. Uh, they are just right behind you, and they've had Ogden Murphy Wallace since the late nineteen seventies. So, uh, there, and then there's uh a, a kind of a group of some other folks, and then uh there's, uh, they start to contract out more and more uh, as they go uh down in population. So, uh, it is a stretch, and there may be, and, and we've internally had those same discussions about, um, is this, is this model going to work um, for the size and the complexity and the demand uh for moving forward? Uh, those are big questions, and as Mr. Zabel uh referred to earlier, uh, those are gonna take some, some doing, those are gonna take some serious research to determine whether that's the case. Uh, really, at this point though, uh, the consensus in, in my head, which uh, uh, may not be the case, uh, but the consensus in my head was this is not something we need to be, we, that we can afford to mess with right now with the transition from uh, the, the next city manager, and that's something that the next city manager uh and, and our office would uh, that's might be something that they would wanna explore downrange. Uh, so this is an opportunity, what the, the goal of this contract was was to, to get the rate up and to answer Mr. Serrano's question, market rate. I'd give you a hundred bucks if you could find somebody that's charging less than about two-twenty-five, two-fifty in, in the city of, or uh, in, in tri-cities right now. Uh, most of them are around three. Uh, paralegals are charging around one-fifty, uh, so uh, depending on the, 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 the area. Um, now, obviously, you guys buy in bulk and you always pay your bill, so um, you know, that's why I'm, I'm giving you the Costco discount there, so. Um, but uh, the, no, at the end of the day, uh, what it really comes down to is this was an attempt. Whether it's successful or not, it's, it's up to you, but this was an attempt to try to meet all those competing interests that we currently find ourselves in. We need to, we're going through the city manager process, we, we've got a, you know, exponential demand on, on our We need to, we're going through the city manager process, we, we've got a, you know, exponential demand on, on our office. I need to be able to staff up to meet that demand, or I'm gonna need to start making some different choices and saying no more. Because I have to think about the long-term interest there, so this was really the goal, uh, was to get it, get it fair, get it in, in all in one, in one spot. And, uh, then that still gives us the flexibility, uh, that we would want downrange, everybody.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Ferguson, I'll wrap up, I won't touch on this anymore, I just kinda think, looking at everything. There's enough weasel words in here for us to leverage, and I know I hate to say it, Eric knows what they mean, um. There's words in here that are very beneficial to us, you know, very clearly in your performance and execution. And it's gonna be very clear, I think, in, in my mind's eye, that again, we, I just got it spelled out from city manager's able. That if we're not happy with the product that we're getting, or we'd like to do more, if these criteria aren't being hit. First thing we do is ask for a performance of a public official, so.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Campos, uh, Councilmember Brown.
Just in closing, um, just, Mr. Ferguson, thank you very much, um. When I say this, you are appreciated, um, you do respond, um, but we're, I just wanna close up with saying this, just that. What we stated is, what we stated and the perception was that we were just gonna come back quickly in my mind. And get this thing set up, because at the end of the day, we have to take care of Pasco. Whatever we discuss, we must make sure that the city is secure, and right now, new interruptions. It's just not gonna be healthy for us, but again, I just wanted to go back to, just to reiterate, mindset said, we were gonna. Get back to this thing and then bring it forward as such today, but a new upset, I just don't know if it'll be healthy for the city. And we can even talk about this stuff later on and make some revisions, if so, see fit, that's just me. So, you're appreciated, thank you for presenting it and answering the questions on tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Um, I do have a couple of questions and comments on this just real quick, and, um. So, what, when we're, typically when we're negotiating or setting up a resolution that has, what I'm hearing is going to be a fiscal impact. We have some sort of estimate of a ballpark of what that might be, uh, the fiscal impact of this one is, is currently blank, um. And I, I, I'm not interested in negotiating over hourly rate, that's not my question, but do we have any sort of idea of what the annualized fiscal impact would be of this?
About a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so like next year, we would expect if we approve this agreement, that next year we'd see about a budget impact of just over a hundred, a hundred K?
Yeah, depending on, uh, usage. That, that's on the current rates, now, the, the one thing that could impact that is, you know, if we have more staff hours, we're gonna be able to get more work done. And so you'll see those hour, hourly rate rises up and then number of hours will rise up too.
So, was, was that just an answer of the, um, hourly impact for the ex, for the addition, for the increase in fee, or is that including additional?
That would be all things the same.
Okay, so that's with the current level of service, we'd expect about a hundred thousand dollars of impact. And if, but we're also talking about potentially addition, additional staff members, additional hours being charged. I'm looking at Mr. Ferguson looking very squarely over there.
I think we're talking about two completely different things, so, uh, the city of Pasco, we billed the city of Pasco five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars last year. So, uh, and that was, uh. A, a good, it, that way at the time was probably about sixty percent of the sixty, a seventy percent of the revenue of, of the firm. So that's, and then now that's just, that keeps going up and up, and I guess we're talking about two different things, because this would be an increase. A slight increase, because it's about, uh, the, what thirty-five, it's a nineteen percent increase, so, um. But the, the amount of overhead, uh, for the law firm, uh, is about what you're paying. So I need everybody else so that I get a check, and so that's what this is, making sure that if, if, if Pasco's gonna take more of those services. Uh, they're gonna have to take more, they're gonna have to take more of the revenue on as well, to be able to continue to get that level of interaction with us.
Right, so I'm hearing two different, two things, I'm hearing a, there's an impact from increasing the rate, which again, I think we're, I'm sorry, please, please, I, I don't wanna.
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, we have a, an hourly rate increase that will drive a cost, a cost increase, um, that make, uh, as, as Councilmember Serrano was saying. You know, that's, um, the current rate seems, um, wholly unreasonable as opposed to partially unreasonable. Um, and then additionally, it sounds like we would need, like, um, I, I understood you, Mr. Ferguson, you're saying that we would, that you need to staff up. And have additional, um, attorney hours or paralegal hours charging to the city as, in addition to a rate increase. Do we have a combined total impact of what we'd expect on, uh, just, or, or I'm talking or, within a hundred thousand, I'm not talking like, 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 tell me within a dollar or?
Sure, yeah, no, so, uh, the way you're currently tracking, I mean, this year, um, and, you know, that's one of the things I spend Sundays doing is going over numbers. So just to try to make sure that we're on track and, and where things are going, but, uh, we're currently on track for, um. The, the city is going to take on, um, I think it's, the last time I looked at it, it was right around almost six hundred is where you're going, uh, but. Ask the staff on this table and they'll tell you that, uh, they're not, that they need way more than that, so. Um, so I'm into, yeah, especially this, yeah, yeah, witness one right here, so, uh, but no, that's the, so we, I, I would, I think what, what. Uh, the, what Mr. Zabel and I were talking about earlier was, I would anticipate about another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just in. Uh, with, based on the rate increase and the ability to dedicate more hours to the city of Pasco, cuz that's really where this is coming from. Uh, over the years, uh, city of Pasco, because of the demand, has creeped into this area where now it's just becoming more and more of. What we refer to in the, in the industry as a captive firm, now that, that's great for some things. Cuz you get a guaranteed rate of return and, and profit margin and all those good things, the downside is, uh, you better have, uh, some long-term commitments. If you're gonna do that, uh, as, because those, you're putting all your eggs in that basket, so we're kind of in no man's land here, everybody wants to keep their options open. But we can't stay, we can't keep doing what we've been doing, because I, I'm gonna be dead by Christmas, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that, cuz I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, what I'm hearing is that you need to staff up to be able to meet the current demands. And it sounds like we're having issues meeting the current question, requests and demands right now, and so if there were more of you. And say that, that was entirely elastic, you have an infinite number of staff at your beck and call, um. We would have charged more hours to the city this year, because the need and demand is there. And the level of service that you're able to provide isn't what we would all like if you had an infinite number of staff. So we'd have more hours, in addition, we'd have additional, um, um, costs for the labor. And my, if I'm doing my rough math, a hundred and twenty-five is about labor, about rate increases, isn't, isn't counting for additional labor. So do we have an estimate of what the additional labor would, would cost to get you up to the level of service that you would want to provide for the city?
Well, it wa, it's not a one for one, because it'll be a shift, uh, some of that will actually come off my plate and I can maybe watch a Seahawks game on a Sunday, that'd be a nice treat. But, uh, the, I'm teasing, but my point is, is that, uh, we can, uh, some of that's gonna be a shift, because there'll be other things that I can do, like run the law firm. Uh, and, and be able to have associates do the work, so there will be some, uh, economies of scale that we'll be able to take advantage of, 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 uh, folks to be able to do things. So it will go up, but it won't necessarily be a, um, you know, okay, so here's a, here's one more project. We are significantly behind, uh, in our, in, in the demand, uh, and there's, I mean, and there's, I don't, I'm not saying this is even, uh. The, the things that we're behind on, uh, aren't even really discretionary, they're, they're, they're mandatory, um, and so, um. They, they've gotta get done, and so, uh, without the ability, and that's, that's on the one hand, the other hand is, I gotta find somebody. And right now, I mean, I'm, I'm crossing my fingers and I'm putting together a pretty good recruitment campaign to try to, to get somebody. I'm going to Osama next week to, to see if I can, uh, uh, buy somebody some beers in the, in the, after the, after the conference and see if I can talk him into coming over. But no, I'm teasing, but my point is, is that there's a lot of, uh, a lot of work that's still to be done.
Sure, and, and I wanna be clear, I'm not trying to nitpick any of the things you're saying here in terms of what the basis is, I, I just, the number's blank, and I'm trying to get at a number. So I'm hearing a hundred thousand dollars, I'm hearing two hundred thousand dollars, I'm hearing three.
You, you tell me.
I, I.
Cuz it's gonna be based on.
Ability sitting on this dais with what you're telling me to be able to estimate what our budget impact's gonna be, so I'm looking for staff to be able to help us, me understand, what is the fiscal impact? If I'm gonna vote on this tonight, I, I would like to know, what are we expecting to adjust our budget for? And right now, I'm not, I'm not getting a clear answer, even an estimate, and even, uh, uh, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, four hundred, one hundred. I, I'm just looking for anything right here, um, to help me understand what that's gonna be. Um, the basis, I understand everything you're saying, and I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to quibble over a single aspect of anything you said about what goes into that calculation.
That's gonna be based on what, that figure is gonna be based on what, how much you order, how much you, how much demand and supply that we can provide. Uh, depending on the ability for me to be able to staff up, to be able to provide that, so your bill will be anywhere between six hundred thousand and a million dollars.
Alright, appreciate that, thank you, that's, that's what I'm looking for, is just some sort of range, and I appreciate that, that kind of final answer, I'm not holding you to, trying to hold you to a, a number, I just wanna. Get an idea of that impact, um, should I continue with my questions, or do we wanna jump in for, uh, for reviews for anybody?
I just wanted to clear, it sounds like what we're talking about is an IDIQ type contract, right? And it comes down exactly what service, we don't know what yet, based on our current level of need, we might assume more or less, and so I'm glad. Uh, Mr. Ferguson was able to give you a range that satisfies it, what you're looking for.
Yeah, cuz when I'm, when I'm looking at this, we're, when I'm hearing that we need to staff up and that we're, we, we're behind, and so what would it take us to get us true and back on track? And that sounds like additional labor in addition to the rate, and that's all I'm looking for.
Based on the math, that, it sounds about right, cuz I took nineteen percent of six hundred thousand, which is about a hundred and fifteen, so you take that on top of your six hundred thousand. Which brings you right around seven fifteen, seven fifty, not including additional labor hours that we may pull off of that. You, you could look at, and that's just assuming we're having the current level of service that's being asked of, but more than likely, it won't be. We're gonna continue to task more and more of Mr. Ferguson and his staff, so.
Absolutely, I, I agree and a hundred percent agree with all that, and that's what I was trying to understand, I don't know how, what behind looks like for us and how behind behind is, and so I appreciate it. I feel, I feel that you've, you've answered this question well, so thank you.
Great, yeah, just, just so you know, your, your, the bill would be a million dollars right now if, if we had the staff and based on the demand. Uh, annually, at, at a minimum, which is still significantly under for the size city. Uh, significantly under what other cities, uh, are, are paying for legal services, uh, legal departments, uh, and, and services, outside services combined. Uh, some, uh, similar sized cities are around four to two, between two and four million dollars a year, that's my, that's been just based on my homework.
Last, last thing there, Pro Tim, what I'm hearing too is, is something that we haven't discussed yet, is, um, you know, we as council. When we're hearing that, we have responsibility to be financially responsible, physically responsible, right? And so instead of continually tasking staff with things that maybe are nickel and diming, right? Maybe we can lean on the city clerk to maybe get us more training from the AWC to make sure that we understand statutes better. Instead of relying on Ferguson to, to help us out, and that might be something that we, we kinda make it out to, to take credit for and do that. So we can maybe knock that bill down, cuz I'd like to try to keep it to about where it's at, but still continue to, to use Mr. Ferguson and his staff, so. Just something to throw out there, we haven't discussed that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that sentiment, and I think this comes back down to why we, we would, we would have loved to see us at a workshop, so we could talk about some of these things and, and give. And give, Mr. Ferguson, you time to come back to us and, and provide us some more thorough answer. I feel really bad putting you on the spot here, but I'm being asked to make a decision today, so I don't have an opportunity to give you, you know, a week to go back and, and whip out your pencil and, and write down.
Well, and, and we can certainly do that, I'm, I'm happy to, if we want to back up, I, my impression was, is that we needed to get moving. Uh, and quite frankly, this is two weeks behind, I, I was under the impression I needed to come back to you with, at the next meeting. So that we could get going, so that we could get staffed up and meet the demand, because we didn't wanna add this together with our city manager agreement, but at this point. Uh, quite frankly, um, uh, I don't know how I feel about it, and so I think we should workshop it.
And, and I wanna be clear, I'm in favor of trying to keep this going, I don't think this is the right time for change, so none of my questions, I'm intending to be some sort of like rejection of this contract, they need to stretch. Um, I'm looking for implications of it as opposed to wanting a nickel and dime, uh, we need to pay for the services, we, 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 the city of Pasco. Has historically underfunded and underpaid for the services we get, we do that for, we've done that for staff, we've worked on correcting that over the years. We drink that up for police, for fire, for everything we do, we've, 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 we have paid below market rates with below market benefits. And, and run off of the, the love that would, the people who work for the city have for the city. Um, we've over time moved in a direction that has trued us up to what the real cost of a professional city of our size is. And legal services is no different, so I certainly see the need to make sure that we are, we are properly negotiating and paying, paying for the services we demand. And, and our city deserves, so I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to increasing our cost here for, to get the right services in place. So I, I do wanna make that clear, I was looking for a number as opposed to a, to argue over the number or whether or not, you know, um, Mr. Ferguson, your, your law, your law firm, uh, deserves it. Um, sorry, let me just take my notes on moving question, so I understand that the relationship between the, a, a legal firm. And, or attorney and the city council and city manager is different than any other relationship. That the city council has with any other employee or contract of the city, um, that dotted line, I think we, I think we referred to it earlier. Um, I appreciate that we can go into, um, our executive session if we have a concern. And we could move very rapidly on terminating a service, that feels like an extreme thing for us to do sometimes. I would be really interested and I'd love an opportunity on, like we do for the city manager, if the city attorney is partially a direct service to us. The staff has an opportunity to weigh in with city manager and, and, uh, the executive, and at the team meetings where they lambaste you with your, not having gotten. Your, your job done on time, um, but we as a council don't actually have an opportunity for that, unless we call a special executive session. And that requires a certain number of us who are dis, who'd be dissatisfied enough to say, okay, it's time to revisit this. Um, I'm really interested in having, if, if we have that dotted line and have a need and a desire to provide that feedback. Is there a mechanism or can there be a mechanism for us to do it on a, on a regular basis, annually or something like we do with the city manager? To provide that feedback, so there's an opportunity to resolve any concerns we have and move forward without having to go down a path where it feels more like a light switch. Than a dimmer switch, um, I don't think it's fair or reasonable for us to put any contract or any. Um, employee directly on the spot of, we're thinking about firing you, defend yourself, that's not, that's not what I ever want to have as a relationship. Is there a mechanism or a reasonable way we can go about providing an annual review or something? And would that be something that we'd wanna change and add to this as, as part of it, to be able to provide that feedback and opportunity to have a dialogue about. Are we treating our city attorney fairly and vice versa?
So to answer the first part of your question, so, uh, it is a, it is a unique relationship, because while the, uh, statutes are abundantly clear. That the city manager has all the authority and the council cannot give any direction to city staff, uh, there is an ethical obligation that the city attorney has. Uh, that's been defined by not only, uh, statute, but also through the, uh, what we refer to as the rules of professional conduct of, of corporate clients, what we. Uh, it's, this is what we use as the entity model, in other words, the attorney represents whoever's decision it is to make. So, when it's a, when it's a ordinance, a council decision, I'm your lawyer, when it's a staffing decision, I'm the city manager's attorney, right? So it, it, it changes depending on it, so when you have an in-house attorney, who is also a staff member. Directly under the, the direction of the city manager, uh, it's, uh, one of those situations, a little bit similar to like. The Attorney General of the United States works for the president, but, but still has an independent kind of, uh, requirement that he has to, to, uh, uh, come back to, uh. Congress to, to brief them on certain things, same thing here, uh, with an outside law firm. Uh, the contract, because council retains the right to contract unless they've otherwise delegated that, because council has the ability to, to enter a contract. They have a little more say in what those working conditions and what those requirements are for the attorneys, and it also adds a little bit of a layer. Uh, because it's, it's an odd situation to, uh, if there's a situation where council clearly needs to be made aware of something, because something's going on. Obviously, that's never happened in this situation, but, uh, there's obviously been other, uh, chances or, or other things, uh, that, where that's happened, where there's been situations that council. Did need to be made aware, uh, of certain things that, um, were in the executive branch, so, um, and, you know, it, it kinda. By doing a contract, our, our whole, uh, I guess perspective on it has been by having a contract attorney, one of the things that that really does is kinda keeps the. Uh, it keeps the boundaries clear, so that it's, it's, uh, not, uh, we don't work, uh, as a staff member directly for the city manager. But we take day-to-day direction, uh, from, from the executive branch, as the city manager being the, the head of that executive branch, so it does. It does, uh, put a little nuance in there, um, and it's worked quite well, uh, for our firm, we represent, uh, like I told, uh, folks before. We represent, uh, seven other municipal corporations and, uh, it's worked out, uh, really well and, and, um, we, um, work hard and provide a good service. So, um, there's that aspect of it, uh, the, with regard to the evaluation, um, the, the executive, it's funny. Because the executive session, uh, exceptions, uh, to open public meetings really don't fit this. The, the contractor kind of relationship, it, it really fits the, uh, in-house or the, uh, actually staff member. Uh, uh, actually city employee, uh, but since we serve in that role that a, a ci, a city employee would, we are functional equivalent. Essentially, even though we're contracted out, so, um, that's how we've been able to, uh, address these issues and been able to talk about some of the, the concerns, uh, the councils had. And, and be able to talk about our performance, because that is a public official, now, am I a public employee? No. But, uh, I've, I've determined and, and others that, that we are a public official, uh, because we, we serve in a statutory role that the city has to provide, so. Um, we can continue to do that kind of evaluation, uh, in executive session.
I guess I'd appreciate if we had something in here that had that on a regular basis, I don't see anything in here that has any sort of feedback loop. And I know as an employee. And I know as an employee, I want that feedback loop, so I can get on a regular basis a specific forum. By which I can raise any concerns I have and vice versa, those who are paying me can raise concerns about my performance. Um, not just getting called into HR, as it were, where that's a. Um, and now a very difficult conversation to have, and it feels like it's much more charged than it needs to be if you're having an, a, an, an ongoing outlet. Is that something that we could add as a term in this contract for, for discussion on, on an annual review process where? We, whereby we can review performance or, or something along those lines? Um, I'm not asking for a change to termination clauses or anything like that where suddenly, you know, hey, the bad review, we cut your rate or we fire you, like, um. We have mechanisms already exist for that. Um, is that something that we could add to this, to this, um?
You could certainly try to, if you, if folks wanted to vote to amend the, the agreement as, as presented in the packet, you could certainly do that and add that as a requirement. Quite frankly, uh, there's probably no need to, because at any time, uh, if that's something that the council wants to do, um, we can do that, it's not something that, uh. It would have to be a breach of contract situation, I'm certainly happy to have that conversation, and there's plenty of times where, uh, I could bring my list too, so. We'll, uh, we'll have a nice discussion about, about the expectations and what those, uh, need to be between both parties, so I'm happy to make sure that's a. Requirement.
I'd appreciate that clause in there, because it sounds like, um, if we would double our costs this year, if we were quote-unquote doing it right and following this, what, what you presented in front of us. That suggests that there's been a long-term misaligned expectation between council and between your law firm, and. It, that means that it didn't just grow up this last year, right, this is, this has been something that's been longer term, and we didn't necessarily have an outlet for to have this discussion over performance. And whether or not it's meeting requirements, so i- is this something, Mr. Ferguson, that you'd be comfortable coming back with an amended, amended agreement on? Um, I'd hate to, the, the, I, I'd hate putting lo- lawyers on the spot in a meeting, um, and certainly trying to, for myself, documenting what that would look like. Or is this time sensitive enough that you would feel that we need to make a decision tonight where your law firm's gonna be, um. And your personal life and it's going to be in, in trouble?
Well, the, the, the goal is, uh, I've, I've gotta get going and, uh, with recruiting and being able to, to bring someone, I mean, we're talking about being able, if I'm able to find somebody. Uh, locally, great, if I'm not, uh, then we're talking about, uh, an extended process, and I'm, uh, you know, I'm not looking for cannon fodder, I'm looking for. Uh, somebody that can really come in and assist and be that, uh, higher level, but at the same time, I need the commitment to be able to do that, so. Um, it's, it's delaying that process, and if that's something that the council, uh, wants to do to, to come back and. And add that provision, uh, we can certainly do it, um, we could add it right now and, and vote as amended if you'd prefer, or we can, uh, come back and have, uh, workshop.
Well, I would like to propose is perhaps, and see if I can just let me propose them real quick, and then please, I'd, I'd, I'd love your feedback before making decisions. Um, I, I'll be honest, I could use a five-minute break, um, I'm, I think maybe perhaps my fellow council members would, so if that would be an appropriate time to. To, if we need just a minute or two to put something in front of us that we could amend tonight, I would be comfortable with that process. Is, is, is that, Mr. Ferguson, that you'd be, that, that would, would that fit well?
Sure, yeah, I can, I can draft that real quick.
Mr. Zabel, does that make sense for my going down a weird path?
Oh, that's great, thank you.
My fellow council members, is that, does that, are you amenable to that sort of process?
I am.
I don't think it's necessary, but I understand again, I'm in the minority here.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with, with Pete, but the caveat is, is. Again, let's say, performance for Kirk Ferguson skyrockets, we do regret, but we aren't here in ten years. Maybe the city manager that we hire, maybe he's went somewhere else, and then we don't have a mechanism there to just document that that's the new council has that avenue to, to do that. And so I think documenting it in there, cause I, I agree, I write technical documents all day, we have the ability to do it, I don't think it's required, but, um, I think it. It sets up our predecessors with some sort of reminder that this is what you can do.
And for the non-lawyers who don't have that prior knowledge, that that is, uh, an assumed thing that can be done.
Right, I'd, I'd like to point out that I'm not sure this council's ever called an executive session, maybe once, um, in the term that we've been on, um, of our own volition, it's all been recommended by staff. And so while I think we have the mechanism to, um, my concern is that we won't use that mechanism. And Mr. Ferguson won't receive feedback, and we won't receive feedback from Mr. Ferguson, ending in this state where we are clearly four hundred thousand dollars misaligned right now, and that's not fair. That's not fair or reasonable.
I, I hear you on that, but I'm also, you know, I, I sense the, like, the immediacy and the urgency of this, and also it brings me to ask the question, why is it? You know, you know, I have compassion for you, Mr. Ferguson, um, wish you would have brought it to us six months ago, so that you weren't. In the situation that you feel like you're in, or, or even getting that feedback or that input. That the timeliness of getting to mandatory city, um, items. Is not, there's not bandwidth for it because of the lack of staffing, or the lack of hours in day, or whatever the combination of those two things are. And so having brought it to us two weeks ago, and I don't know how that happened internally with staff, but that came to us two weeks ago. Um, and there were a lot of open questions, a lot of questions, number one, but then things that didn't seem, um, answered, and for me personally reflecting on it, uh. Realizing that, you know, we have pretty much a new council to a relationship with legal, uh, legal counsel, and so. Uh, not knowing the process of evaluation, is this coming in public workshop, what is the fiscal impact, how does that come to council? Um, in what process to approve, so that contract. Um, so I'd say, there's a, there was, it seems like we had a public workshop here this evening, um, during a regular meeting. Um, should have probably just happened at a public workshop a few weeks ago, so, um, you know, I'm in agreement, we can do that amendment and, uh. And move forward.
So I'd like to just call a, um, a, a brief recess, um, and then we can come back and discuss any proposed amendment, and a motion can be made if necessary to amend this. Um, and then, um, we can move forward with an amendment. Um, but I would very much like a chance to stand up and walk around right now, is, is council amenable to a, to a brief break before we resolve this?
Yes.
Staff, um, Mr. Ferguson, am I, am I putting you in a spot where this is not acceptable for you, cause I, I, I'm, my intention here is not in any way, shape or form to make you feel like you're not. Not valued and we don't want to continue your services, I don't think we're negotiating over that, we're not asking, we're not, we're not talking about rates. We're not talking about a, a cap on hours, that we're talking about, um, about, um, a, additional feedback loop.
So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy to, to make that, uh, correction, if that's, uh, what council thinks they need to, uh, move forward.
Appreciate that, with that, it is nine seventeen, um, and I'll, and we'll, we'll take a break till, uh, what, nine twenty-three. Five and a half minute break, does that work for everybody? All right, with that, we'll, uh, we're on, we're on break for five minutes, thank you. All right, with that, we are back from our break, um, and we are again, um, discussing, one second. Discussing item G, um, or sorry, nine G, um, about the Kirk Ferguson amended agreement for legal services. So, um, any, any initial comments from council, or, um, we, we discussed possibly, um, a proposed, a proposed amendment to this agreement for a annual review process? Um, Mr. Ferguson, do you wanna read off what you got, and we can, we start with that, and we'll see if there's a discussion and an interesting, uh, motion from council to amend the agreement.
Okay, so there's a couple of different options, uh, it looks like it, it really depends on, uh, what the setting that you're, uh, choosing to wanna do that kind of review, if you're wanting to meet as a. Uh, as a governing body in executive session, uh, the, uh, I, I misspoke earlier, unfortunately, I had the officer and the official, uh, uh. Or official and employee, excuse me, uh, uh, with the wrong, uh, uh, executive session, uh, exception, so. Uh, G forty-two thirty-one ten, uh, one G, uh, is to, is, is to be able to go in executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. Or to review the performance of a public employee. I'm not a public employee, do I fill a functionally equivalent role of a public employee? Yeah, but that's, uh, that's a little concerning. I would be concerned that we would go in executive session and, and could get crossways, so that's, that's, uh, unfortunately, I thought that was the one that, uh, had a public official. Uh, public officials related to G one ten, uh, one H, uh, to evaluate qualifications, uh, oh, sorry, no, um, I lost my. Point, uh, is it, oh, it's the one above it, sorry, F, to receive and evaluate complaints or charges against a, a, a public officer or employee. So, um, we could certainly meet, we could craft it so that we, uh, meet, uh, every six months to discuss complaints. Uh, that would be a little awkward, so, um, which. Uh, or, or we can certainly, uh, meet to discuss the performance, uh, in open session, uh, that's, that's the other option. But, um, I don't really see, uh, an alternative, um, to be able to go in and review, uh, performance. Review the performance, uh, of a public official, unfortunately, it refers to review the performance of a public employee. Um, and I don't think that gets us where we need to go, so, um.
All right, well, I appreciate your quick turnaround on that, and as the person who requested that, it sounds like what we need to do is, um. Um, we need to hold the ci- city manager accountable for, um, for that discussion and for that evaluation, and for. Having a process perhaps of, um, perhaps outside of a meeting, receiving, uh, input from individual council members about. Um, whether or not we're satisfied with legal services, and in return, providing back feedback from our attorney. Um, any dissatisfaction that he or she may have with us as a public agency. Is that, is that maybe, Mr. Ferguson, what the only recourse we could have unless we want to file a complaint against you annually?
That's correct.
Well, I'm not interested in doing that, um, all right, that's all the questions and comments I had, um, and, for tonight, is there any other, um, last, last calls from anybody? I'm seeing none, um, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number forty-two fifty-five approving the amended agreement for legal services between the city of Pasco, Washington. And Kirk Ferguson Law, P L L C.
All right, we have a motion from council member Campos, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by council member Milton, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, um, after much discussion, uh, passes unanimously. All right, thank you, um, look forward to continuing and getting you where you need to go, to be, so be able to watch the Seahawks every once in a while. All right, with that, move on to item ten, unfinished business, none listed. Onto item eleven, new business, Pasco Public Facility District Board reappointments. Um, uh, the city clerk is listed as the actionee here, um, but Mr. Zabel, um, perhaps I'll ask you to write this report.
What's, uh, being asked for is council's confirmation of the mayor's reappointment of, uh, Commissioners Gillespie. Uh, position number four and Dietrich Commissioner, excuse me, uh, position number five to the Pasco Public Facilities Board. Those terms would, uh, then expire July fourteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, um, and I would like to point out that this, that there is a legislative requirement, that it's a recommendation by local organizations, and that looks like in the packet here, that requirement has been met. Mr. Zabel, do I have that correct?
That is correct, yes, Chamber of Commerce, uh, supporting the reappointment of Mr. Dietrich.
Excellent, all right, any questions or comments on this item from council?
I recognize the statutory requirement, but, um, we're often combing through applications, not necessarily for this. Um, and one of the comments we often offer is, you know, should we be looking for new blood, I mean, these, these folks have served quite some time, if I recall correct.
Mr. Dietrich has, uh, Ms. Gillespie since, uh, twenty eighteen.
So, I, I understand the value, especially this late in the game with the PFPD, um. And I suspect we probably didn't go out searching for anyone, um, unlike other commissions that we control. Uh, I'm just gonna, I guess, narrate that, uh, I'm not opposed to reappointing these people, but it'd be nice to not just reappoint. These folks.
Yeah, I believe these, you know, these are clearly, uh, mayoral appointees, but I, I think the thinking in there was, uh. Given where we're at in the, in the process, having that continuity would be a lot of value to it.
All right, any other comments from, or questions? All right, any other comments from, or questions from council? I'll echo Councilmember Serrano's point, but generalize it to, I would very much like to see a more active campaign for recruiting board members and commission, and council members for our, can I call them commissioners for our various boards and commissions? I know we have a number of vacancies, and I would love a concerted campaign to get more, more people to fill those, those empty spots as well as compete for our existing spots. Councilmember Compost?
I wasn't going to touch on, but you guys brought this eloquently. So, I think Debbie has talked about having opening positions, and she's got resumes. I think Leo Paralas has even said that he's filled for the planning commission. There's a couple vacancies on there. And so, I think her plan is to bring it forward to us. I don't want to speak for her, but, but that was a discussion her and I had several weeks because she's my seat neighbor. But there's a great, great comments. I'd like to see that as well. I made a comment to her about that because there's quite a bit of talented and evolved people out there that want to do more for their community and not just the people that I've already spoken to, but, you know, like you said, a recruitment process to find additional people who are out there that can contribute to the city would be excellent. With that, though, I'm ready to make motion.
All right, appreciate it, please.
I move to confirm mayor's reappointment of Marie Gillespie to position number four and Leonard Dietrich to position number five on the Pasco Public Facilities District Board with the terms expiring July fourteenth, twenty twenty-six for both positions.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Compost. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, none heard, so passes unanimously. With that, move on to item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. City Manager Zabel.
Just a few items, you know, following up on the discussion from earlier tonight, where we had Pam and her grandson up to council talking. So, we, we had been in conversation with Pam now for probably three or four weeks, and Zach Ratkay and his staff have been looking for some opportunities. I think we have found a couple of opportunities for some conversions, and I think we can make those happen this year, provided we don't have supply chain, you know, problems. But next week, or next year, next year's budget, you'll see a, probably a little more concerted, comprehensive effort. Right now, we're just kind of looking for a couple of spots we can do that had good accessibility. That was the, you know, what, what kind of opportunity is there and how accessible it is, that was the criteria. So, we do a little bit more thoughtful look, it'll probably take a little bit more upgrade in terms of accessibility. So, want to let council know that, and I did have the opportunity to talk to them about that before the meeting and let them know. Secondly, the Wash Dot project on the east side of the Blue Bridge underway, there's construction for a sound wall by Flamingo Village Mobile Home Park. It's very similar to what we saw by Moore Mansion a couple of years ago. So, that's going to be beginning soon. And then, we got notice today from Basin Disposal that they're changing some routes. That'll be across the city, good chunk of River View, my neighborhood, moving from Wednesday to Tuesday, so I got one last day to get my yard mowed now, so. Anyway, others will, you know, maybe get a day extra, I don't know. We'll see how that pans out for them. Obviously, the Kopa delegates, our Kalima delegates will be in town this Thursday, some have already arrived, and a number of events, including the Sunset Sympathy on Symphony Concert on Friday, Saturday at Peanuts Park Plaza. So, some, some big things happening there. I think our Kalima-Pasco group, our Kopa group has done a great job of trying to pull together a really great series of events and it really show our Kalima contingent, like they did us, what Pasco is all about. So, they have a scheduled council, that should be in your mail folders now, and, excuse me again, the concert gala on Friday and Saturday, so. And we did have, I'm going to have the finance director talk a little bit about our audit. We, council's got emails earlier inviting you to an audit and then wanted the conclusion of the, the exit audit and from the state auditor's office. Overall, the audit went well, but we did have a couple of issues primarily associated with COVID. Part of it's because, you know, this, this community and this council was basically on the leading edge of getting money out and trying to help residents. And we were trying to do a lot in a very compressed period of time without a lot of regulation because we hadn't got rules. As council's aware, about a year to get the final rules, but, so there, there was a ton of things going on, a lot of moving parts. One of those was City of Pasco basically being the lead for the vaccination site for all the tri-cities and taking that on, working directly with National Guard and a number of other contractors. And with that, I'll turn that over to Director Buckley for a minute.
Yes, I think everyone got the audit exit conference notes that were presented, and we do always appreciate the local audit team. They are good to work with and help keep us sharp, and so that's always a good relationship that we appreciate. Primarily, the concerns were related to COVID grants, and I encourage you to look over the documentation that they gave, the auditor's office gave you, but to put it in a nutshell, I guess, just that we had, we have procedures by and large that meet the standards typically, but in this case of unusual timing and both grantors and agencies trying to figure out what they are doing and move quickly and paperwork coming out after the fact. Some of the steps that we normally would take weren't necessarily taken or known that they fit this case. You know, the message kind of was hurry up and use it and help people and get things done. And so, like the fire department worked hard to do that. And so, the, there's a, there's a couple little small things that just didn't get taken care of, and so they didn't have a choice but to give us a finding in those cases, so that's what they did. And we'll just continue to, we do have, it did present some opportunities to look at the processes that we have in place and some ways to do things a little differently and ask more questions in the beginning, like from our grantors to say, we need more details and we need them right away before we can do, take further steps. So, we'll keep perfecting and fine tuning and, and growing, and so. But if you do have questions after you look at that, please reach out and I'd be happy to give more information.
I, I will note that Director Sigdel took great pains, along with then finance manager Buckley, to try to get information out of some of our agencies at that point in time, and not a lot was forthcoming. But, and I, I thought Director Buckley, and council's welcome to see it, put up a really good defense on, to the state auditor's office on the, on the two findings. Unfortunately, you know, they're hemmed in by their own rules, so, you know, there's not, there wasn't a lot of discretion on their part. I think a lot of sympathy, not a lot of discretion, so. With that, I didn't have anything further.
Thank you. Yes, please reach out if you have any more questions.
Councilmember Roach.
I just had a question. As, as part of the audit, was there a IT admin email that went out to us to state that there had been some review of, you know, passwords and the need to change them? Okay, because I, I received that right at the same time that we got the, the audit emails. I didn't click on anything.
Okay.
But it did say it@pasco-wat.gov. So, check the address, and the timing matched up really well with when the audit was happening, so, I mean, it could have been a successful, could have been.
Yes, but.
But it wasn't.
It didn't trick you.
So, I wanted to bring that up just so that anybody else who received that didn't, yeah, and to clarify that that wasn't coming from, from Pasco, City of Pasco.
You're correct, it was not.
Thank you. I do have just one real quick, quick question on, on, on the audit. Is any of it material to allocations we've made or, like from a standpoint of we had a certain amount of COVID relief funds, none of those dollars are changing? It's not anything like that, it's just how we controlled the aspects of it internally?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understood what the implications were, and it sounds like the implications were, we could have tidied some stuff up better, but it's not, nothing to be worried about.
Yeah, it's actually even more, it's more about how we documented than controlled.
Yes.
Appreciate that clarification. That matters in the financial world. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any, any comments for miscellaneous discussion from, from council?
Just wanted to know from city manager whether it had any update on the Kopa delegation. I'd seen your email about the earthquake, the seven point six magnitude earthquake, which I would not have known about until I read your email. So, just wanted to know about the health and well-being of the state of Kalima and the delegate, delegates who are coming.
Yeah, I, I only have second hand, and second hand is, there wasn't a lot of damage. That's second hand. So, I, I don't want to speak to it like it's fact. I, I know the delegation's still coming and, and the events are still on, so. And I'll try to find out more specifics tomorrow that are maybe a little bit more factual than what I've shared with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Just real quick, to go back to the resolution forty-two fifty-four, the supplemental employment agreement for the city manager contract, just where it speaks about the interim portion. How are we going to look at that? How early are we going to start? What, what happens at that point? Because as you go out, can the interim now step into place and begin training or whatever that looks like? If you could speak to that for me?
Yes, so the, the recruitment is underway for the city manager replacement, and that process is going to take a little bit. I don't, I don't think you'll probably have, you may have a short list by the end of October, but you're probably not going to have a, a selection made. And even once you make a selection, depending on what your selection might be, there may be relocation and things like that, or it may be someone more local. So, that, that remains to be seen. So, you're probably going to, you'll probably wind up appointing an interim that would take effect midnight on November first, as I'm going out the very next second, the new person will be appointed. And we can, I, I was planning on having that discussion with you at probably one of the next, either the next workshop or the next meeting after that in exec session about some options that we might have, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Compost?
On that, I haven't seen an agenda for the mini retreat that we're doing yet. Have I overlooked that? Have you already sent something out?
I have not, not, to my own knowledge, nothing's been sent out. I know it's scheduled, there really, as far as I understand, there wasn't much of an agenda. Council wanted the opportunity to just.
Yeah.
So, it's basically just going to discuss items the council wants, wishes to discuss. Matter of fact, we're specific about not getting loaded up with an agenda.
I just wanted to make sure, because I slept since then, so. You're hearing aids last week, I forgot my brain at home this week.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Compost. I just have two quick questions for you, Mr. Zabel. One, the fire downtown, we had two buildings, I believe, caught fire on Clark last week. Do we have any more information on that that we can share at this time?
Last I heard, and that was a few days ago, so it was late last week, those were still under investigation, there was not a cause identified at that point in time. I, I can check back on that.
I'd appreciate it.
See where fires at on that.
Very much appreciate that, because that's, that's a big deal, and that could have gotten very much out of hand, and we could have had a much worse situation. And with that, I, I would, would encourage anything we can do to help make sure that downtown's protected. I, I have visions of, what was it, Prosser? I think that most of their downtown, including their city hall, burned down, what, last year? Something like that? So, there's.
It is, yeah.
Well, our city hall wouldn't be at risk from a fire in downtown. The number of connected buildings we have down there without sprinklers are substantial. This could have gotten really bad. So, I'd, I'd welcome any, any options that the city staff could bring forward as to ways that we can help further protect those buildings, any options we have on our, on our plate. As we saw here, there's a public interest in making sure that our downtown isn't on fire. So, appreciate that. And then, the other thing I was going to ask is, with this, with the master, downtown master plan draft in front of us, we talked about hiring a contractor for the city to look at the structure of the DPDA. Is that, is that something we have in the works, or do we have an estimated timeline of when we would expect to have further conversation of that?
I'm going to have Director White speak to that a little bit, but we have engaged a firm to have this, begin those conversations.
It, it is in the works, Mayor Protem. Actually, we should probably have something executed by the end of the week for a specific look at the DPDA and their organization.
Executed as in that we will, we will have a preliminary findings or, not findings, that's too strong of a term, but preliminary understanding of where we could go, or that's, we will have a contractor in place that's starting to look?
Contract in place.
Great, appreciate that. I'd appreciate a timeline in the future, if you can just send me my email and present it at a later council meeting.
I'll, I'll note it's a firm DPDA has been working with, so city's going to, and DPDA will be part of that process as well, so.
Great, appreciate that. I'd, I'd appreciate knowing what that process will look like. There's a lot of eyes on downtown right now, and we need, we need all the help we can get. All right, that's all I had. Any other miscellaneous discussion, Councilmember?
Just one thing, I really appreciated the, the mailing that went out on the Broadmore Interchange Project. I brought it with me because I was excited about seeing it and reading it, and I'd had a number of residents engage me on it. And then, when discuss, you know, talking about this particular mailer to another council member, they said I didn't get it. So, I was curious, is it, was it citywide that it went out or just a portion of the city? District specific?
No, it wasn't. It was basically anybody who signed up for any of the public meetings. We sent it out to everybody. Everybody, we had an address or an email address, too.
Okay. All right, well, it's really good information. I wish it went out citywide. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. I hesitated to make a last call, so I don't see any lights on, so we're just going to move forward. We, do we have, let's see, next item up, do we have any need for an executive session tonight, Mr. Zabel?
Not this evening.
All right, with that, we, I will move on to item fourteen adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.